Mr. Yang, please.
Hmm.
Mr. Yang, please.
Good morning, everybody. We'll call our meeting back in order and I just want to apologize for that quick delay of our beginning start.
Your microphone.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. We're called back to order. Thank you for returning. We had a board member that was called away, so we had to pause. So thank you for that help with our technology. And so we are called to order. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Do we have a second? Okay, motion by Mr. Benway, second by Mr. Johnson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're to the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Johnson, if you'll lead us, please, sir.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Davis, if you'll lead us in a moment of silence.
Yep, if we'll just move right into a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We're at item two, reports, information and discussion, and we're ready to hear about our Moore County Schools 2025-2027 selected school improvement plans. Dr. Locklear.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certainly appreciate board members being here this morning. I want to thank Ms. Sinan, Ms. Phillips, our entire academic students support services team. Many are with us today, and of course, our principals and their school teams that have worked to have strategic, pinpointed school improvement plans that continue to improve their schools this year. Our theme this year in Moore County Schools is diving deeper in the Moore County Schools way. We know it's hard work, tremendously hard work, but the right work for kids. And that has shown itself over year after year of our continuous improvement in our school district. I'm awfully proud of that. But we talk about the positive pressure of continuous improvement, and so we're always focused on that. And that's what these days are about, is sharing out those strategies that our schools are working on to continuously improve where they are, continuously get better, monitor that, maybe have some mid-course corrections, but continue to monitor that so we continue to have that improvement over time. So with that, awfully proud of the work we've done, and this process of school improvement is part of the Moore County Schools way. So proud of that. I'll turn it right over to Ms. Sinan, who will get us going this morning. Thank you, Ms. Sinan.
Thank you. Good morning, board members. Over the next two days, school principals will be here to present their school's school improvement plan to you. In your notebook, you have the schedule of the schools that are presenting today and tomorrow. Today, you'll hear from our unique schools, which include Moore Innovative High School, CLC at Pinckney, and Connect Academy. You'll also hear from our schools that are designated as low performing or consistently low performing. Those are Cranes Creek Middle School, Elise Middle School, Aberdeen Elementary School, and Robbins Elementary School. As we review the plans that are developed by the school improvement teams, you'll notice the alignment to the Moore County Schools strategic plan that was adopted in June of 2025. As schools plan, they review the board priorities and goals set to align that to their school improvement plans. The guiding policy for school improvement teams is Moore County Schools Board Policy 3430, which details the requirements for these teams. They must be elected by school staff. The plan is developed by the team designed to target and positively improve the greatest areas of need at the school. And the plan is voted on by school staff prior to bringing it forward to the superintendent and to the Board of Education for approval. Moore County Schools has systems and processes for effective school improvement planning, which include a comprehensive needs assessment and tools to monitor their school performance. Approximately half of our schools present each year a two-year plan for approval by the Board of Education. Moore County Schools way is embedded throughout and is just how we do business in Moore County. You will see the school improvement process embedded in the Moore County Schools way. As goals and action steps are developed, the professional learning team framework, other frameworks, effective, engaging, and impactful lesson planning and lessons are included in the Moore County Schools way, which is aligned to our school improvement planning process. Including these practices in our systems and processes and developing relationships to support the work is how Moore County Schools gets positive outcomes for students every single day. Part of effective school improvement planning is ensuring district administration provides support to schools. These supports include, but are not limited to, our ongoing explicit feedback provided based on action step implementation and progress towards goals, monthly review of discussions, data analysis, and school improvement team minutes, participation in school improvement team meetings, ongoing support is provided for low performing and restart schools. Our access team has something called, something that we call commitments of support, that we make commitments to those specific schools of these are the things that we are going to do to help provide support to the school. District walks to provide explicit feedback on instructional practices. Our superintendent does leadership walks with our principals, learning and leading professional development, which is focused on instructional practices and leadership development for our principals, and then retreats for our restart and low performing schools. In this slide, you have a list of commonly used terms. This is a glossary as you are going through the school improvement plans and taking a look at that, just some key words and phrases that you'll see in a school improvement plan that you may need to brush up on. You all know in education, we love acronyms, so that will help you to understand those as well. So what you're going to be able to expect today, again, our school improvement plans from our unique schools, which include Moore Innovative High School, the Community Learning Center at Pinckney, and Connect Academy, information and presentations from the newly designated school, our low performing schools, update from the 24-25 low performing schools, and progress on their 25-26 school improvement plans, process and timelines for low performing schools, and then also the comprehensive support plan for the low performing schools. We are first going to start with Moore Innovative High School. So Ms. Sacony will be in here to share her school improvement plan.
Good morning, everybody. All right. We are excited to present Moore Innovative High School's school improvement plan, the very first one. And as you can imagine, most of this plan really revolves around creating a school. That's, that's really what, what our plan looks like, so let's jump right in. You can see here our vision, mission, and core beliefs. This for us is critical in terms of ensuring that students get what they need from us. And we've promised a lot of things as a school and as a district, and our core beliefs really demonstrate that we expect excellence. We expect high levels of collaboration. We expect to support students. And more than, our favorite, I think, is the tenacity can and will be taught. And that's something for us that our student body in general struggles with that perseverance sometimes. The skills are there, but it's been real easy to give up over the course of their school careers, and so that tenacity is hard, but it's critical to what we're trying to do. So that is something that we are really committed to. Our mission, we set, set the new standard where every student will thrive, period. It's essential, and in order for them to do what we're asking them to do, they have to thrive. They can't just be there. They have to be active in the learning, and that they graduate as prepared professionals, because that's what we've promised the public. On this slide, you'll see our demographics. I'm very proud of how diverse our student body is. I'm also very proud of the wide range of student that we connected with for this program. As you can see, we have, we have 20 students who came from out of the district. That represents both charter, homeschool, and private school students, with the rest of our students being Moore County Schools students previously. So we're, we're proud to have a wide range. They have blended beautifully together. It's like they've always been together. They love each other, and I literally got a quote from a student yesterday to use as part of recruitment, and the last sentence from the student was, "And as for friends, everybody at Moore Innovative is friends." And wow, that, that's pretty impressive, particularly from a student who was a little unsure about us at times. So we, we feel very, very proud of that. But the demographics definitely represent Moore County as a whole, and, and we're proud that it is a wide range and diversity. Just a few pictures from our first quarter. So school started for us on August 7th, and during that time, a lot has happened. We have already completed our first quarter. Yesterday, report cards went home. No one failed a class. No one failed a class. And that's really important. This is honors level coursework, and it is being taught at an honors level. So you're talking about a student body that more than half of them failed a course last year. No one failed this quarter, and it wasn't because it was easy. It was because it was hard, and there was a lot of pushing to make it happen. So very proud of them, and, and they really truly are joy. So on this, you can see our ribbon cutting and just a picture of our student body. On the far right was one of our days in the culinary department a few weeks ago. You can see my amazing staff. We are tiny but mighty. And, and a little bit of small group instruction from intervention time over there on the left. So what's already in place, honestly, we hit the ground running, and I'm pretty shocked at how much we already have in place. And that is honestly a testament to the team that, that works together, because they're pretty much determined that we're going to make it all happen. And so we didn't want to wait. We would rather get started and, and then, you know, make adjustments as needed. So you can see here just some highlights of, you know, what we're really proud of. Our PLC at Work Foundation processes are well in place. We are doing something a little bit different with PLCs at more innovative in terms of looking at employability skills, which is a little different than what you're going to hear from most of my colleagues. We are obviously looking at the academic side as well, but this employability skill piece is essential for what we are trying to do. And so that's an added layer for us. We do have daily den time. That's an advisory block first thing in the morning, which is about 10 to 12 students, and all of our faculty members, myself included, have a group that we meet with first thing every morning. And that is looking at get your agenda out. What do we have due this week? Pull up your grades. What are you missing? Do, do you know how to write a signature? Do you have your core information as a human being memorized? What's your phone number? What's your zip code? What's your, you following me? That, I mean, it is like some of the most basic skills, but things that employers have told me. Kids don't know. So we're working on that first thing in the morning. We have daily PAC, which is an intervention or extension block. So we've already done a regroup of that already through our MTSS process. We started out with pre-assessments for math reading and writing. We grouped students out the gate. Several, after three or four weeks, we're ready to, to move into the extension group. So right now, we have a math pack, we have a writing pack, a vocabulary pack, and, and then two extension blocks. One is doing world history, document-based questioning, or DBQs as we call it, and the other is doing some science preview vocabulary. So those are really, really helpful. And the other thing that I would like to really hit up here, something that came based on student feedback, which we are now calling repack. So the students really wanted some options in their group. So for, for extension and intervention on PAC, we're placing you where you need to be, right? There's no excuses for that. But repack was more like, I really, really like a little bit of extra help on something that we're doing right now in class. And so we're doing repack on Fridays, most Fridays, not all, but they select where they go. So on Mondays, they're telling us what they need. We sort that, group that, and then they pick where they, they want to go. And I think the one thing that's just amazing about that is they actually pick where we would send them, right? So, you know, that's an important part. They're not picking where their buddies are. They are really selecting what they, they personally feel like they need support with. And so that, that process requires our faculty to be extremely nimble. They have to get that information on Monday, craft something for Friday on a wide variety of topics. So that, but it's been very helpful, and I think it's something that the kids recognize. We told them when they came to us, your voice, your choice, and we are trying our best to live that. So what's underway, our monthly pathway visits at San Hills Community College. We visited the engineering department. We visited the engineering department on Friday. Yesterday, our counselor was organizing a, a trip to Foundation Hall, which is health sciences, which is really cool. So we're trying to do that every month. Our recruitment kicks off November 3rd, which is really wild. I feel like I just did that. Continuing to refine those, those PLC processes and just really ensuring that we are doing what we're supposed to be doing. And then looking at employability skill assessments for kind of that long-term monitoring for students. So that's what's kind of the next step for us. In terms of our first goal, this is really just the intentionality of creating that effective professional learning community, ensuring that we are unpacking standards, that we have a guaranteed viable curriculum, and that we are monitoring student learning all the time. I'm very pleased at where we already are with this. You know, this is one of those things that ebbs and flows, and particularly when a teacher is changing a course at the semester. So all of our teachers will teach two courses this year. We will have to keep working on that guaranteed viable curriculum over time. It's not something we're going to have out the gate because they're going to change courses in January. So we'll have to do it all over again. But that's something that is critical to me personally. I, I just, it's the work that I know to do, and, and I'm very excited about where we are. So we have already established that foundation with the four pillars of a PLC at work. Feel very confident about that and feel like we're living it. We're just living it every day, continuing to work on that guaranteed and viable curriculum. Using universal screening data. So we did this out the gate in math and reading and in writing as soon as the kids came. In fact, I think they were so tired of us after the first week because we had pre-assessed all the things. But we also found that some of them didn't take the pre-assessment quite as seriously as we needed them to because they weren't quite Red Wolves yet. But we have now, we now understand that you best show what you know, or you're going to be sitting in a PAC group and you might be a wee bit irritated about that. But the other part too is, you know, we did find holes. And, and sometimes kids would say, but this says I was in, I'm on, I'm on third grade level in this skill. And so we're like, well, are you? I mean, we don't know. I mean, truly, we have, we have 65 students who have come from all over. We have no idea what you know, you know? And so we realized sometimes you didn't take this assessment very seriously, and then sometimes we realized you did take this seriously, and you literally don't know how to do this. But that's okay. We got you. So we have filled a lot of holes very quickly, simply just ensuring that we're focused on where, where they are struggling. We will continue to do that at the mid-year and at the end of the year. And then creating and implementing the intervention extension block, which I was proud we had in place in two weeks. And that's pretty shocking. So definitely different at, at the high school level than what I was accustomed to doing, but it's rocking and rolling. Goal two, we want 100% of our students to participate in at least three structured interview opportunities with outside partners. So one thing that we know is that the students are increasingly comfortable with us, which is exactly what we want. Because the more comfortable they are with us, the faster we can move with them, truthfully. We're trying to build the skills that they're going to be more comfortable with someone they don't know. So by the end of the 10th grade, so a year and a half from now, our hope is that they will have had three structured interview processes, opportunities with people who are not us. And so that's going to be us engaging our Sand Hills partners, industry partners, some of you, I hope, who will come in and sit with our students and, and really help us rate where they are on skills because that then drives the seminar experience for us. So if you can really kind of think long-term, as we have juniors and seniors, as we know what their struggles are on the employability side, their seminar experience becomes very specific, right? So all of the students who can't do X are now in a small group, and we're working very specifically on that. So it, it changes a little bit from that academic component that we're hitting right now to then kind of looking, once you're out of here, we need to make sure that you're able to go to work. So you see here in our action steps, developing annual plans for every student, making sure not just that they have a career plan, which is already required, and we use major clarity like all North Carolina schools are supposed to be doing, but looking at those executive functioning skills that our industry partners are telling us they don't have, right? So we need a plan, not just for the academic piece, but also for, sorry to interrupt for a second. We need, we need a strategy, not just for the academic piece, but also for those employability skills, which we know when kids are going and they're sitting down and they're trying to interview and they're trying to talk about themselves and what their experiences are, that it, it's been a real struggle for a lot of people. And so we know that's not just a student issue. That's an adult issue in general. And so that's something that we are determined to have plans for that. Developing a strategic plan for each year that supports student kind of future-ready skills. And so that literally is like developed every Friday. We work on it every Friday for next week because we are building this plane in the air. However, a year from now, we will have the freshman experience completed. And so we'll know exactly what it's going to look like, and then we'll be looking at that sophomore experience. But we're really just trying to make sure that we have a very strategic plan for how to roll this out every week. And then establishing a team in partnership with Sand Hills to really ensure that our students understand the difference between credentials and certifications and all the things that are there. So there are so many opportunities at Sand Hills that it's really easy to get confused with all the things. I mean, even as an adult, it's really easy to get confused. And I find myself having to reference, and so we've, we've requested some folks, they're working with our counselor to create a team. Because what we found is everybody's pretty excited about having our kids there, and everybody wants to talk to them. And that's a wonderful problem, right? Except that then they can't keep it straight. And I have to keep saying, they're 13, 14, and 15. They're 13, 14, and 15. And so we've got to have a strategy here for how we're going to intentionally do this where students really can make some, some decisions for themselves that makes sense. So don't want to just wing things. All right. So all things considered, I think we're, we're doing a really great job. I'm very proud of where we are. Honestly, we're further along than I expected, which is a testament to the people and the students. The students are working really hard, and I don't ever want anybody to think that anybody's put off the gas. If it's not. Be happy to answer any questions you have. Yeah. Y'all just jump in. Just jump in. Remember your mics.
Okay, this is sort of a hodgepodge of questions and comments. If you haven't attended one of Ashley's musters first thing in the morning to, to read the orders for the day, you'll have to do that. At, at the CTE meeting the other day, you really made me sit up straight. When you said that some of your, most of your kids don't know, don't understand problem solving. That's a pretty key, key piece of information. Why?
I, I can't really tell you why. I don't have the root cause of that yet. What I could say, what I see, is that students are generally good test takers. Of a lot of students who look far more proficient than I would say they actually are in life. I think that a lot of that is driven by accountability. I think that what, there's a genuine discomfort in coming up with your own ideas, being able to explain what you mean. So like having the language. It's sometimes not that they don't have an idea up here, but it's literally getting it out of them. So some of it's the confidence. Do I think that's the case for all students? Absolutely not. But it is for the, the students I serve. And, and I serve a different, a different type of student, right? But I think a lot of it is also that I serve students who have historically not engaged. So they're going to sit back, they're going to let somebody else kind of take the floor. They're happy to, you know, happy to let somebody else do the hard work, and it's worked for them, and, and it's not working for them anymore because we're demanding it.
Can't hide. So what's your approach?
So a lot of things. So one of our primary goals is to read, write, think, and speak in every class, every day, period. And that in and of itself is solving a lot of that issue. So if you literally have to speak every single day in every single class about something that's authentic, we begin to develop the language to do that. So we started off literally with sentence stems. This is how you would answer this question. This is how you would get started. Yesterday in science, we, we saw a concern yesterday where they were having difficulty turning sentence, or questions into a sentence to respond. And I was astounded at that, like that we start teaching that when they are little tiny. You know, how is this possible? So there, there are things that we continue to find, and so we just adapt to that, and, and we teach it. So, but if you have to read, write, speak, and think every single day, you'd get a lot better at it very quickly.
Great, super. What is, what is DBQ? Could you explain that to me a little bit?
Document-based questioning. So that is putting students in primary sources through the social studies lens to look at problem solving and thinking. It is intensive writing. It is no joke. It is hard. And so that's why for us right now, that's an extension opportunity. So that's for our students who are demonstrating mastery of foundational skills, but they're ready for the push. I don't know if they're ready for the push. They would tell me that they're not because it's a lot. It really is a lot. But it, it makes them analyze and evaluate and then determine, you know, a response. And that's, that's intense.
Great.
High level.
Do we do this elsewhere in the system?
We do. That's a, it's a district.
It is, okay. You know, you mentioned report cards, and I've got a couple of sample report cards at my desk at home. Every now and then I look at it and I say, how can we make that more useful? You got an opportunity, I presume you have the parents sign that?
We don't have them sign that. But we've met with all of them. We've met with 100% of them, so they know.
Off the top of my head, one of you, one of you can turn the report card into a two-way communications feature, you know, where they can give you feedback, be through, in a forced manner, but if you don't require them to sign it anyway, that's a hard thing to do.
I think when we talk about grading, there's such a philosophical breadth there to, to take on, but I will tell you that one of the first conversations I had with parents that were innovative was that grades for us would reflect what students knew and were able to do, and they would not reflect compliance. And so that has been a shift, and that means that we have students who historically have been all A students that are not. And so that has been hard for students and for parents at times. But I feel very confident that I don't have homework zeros bringing down a grade. No one got extra credit because they brought in tissues. Nobody got extra credit for a permission slip, right? That grade is fully aligned to the standard, period. And so if you have an A, I would expect you can pass an EOC. If you have a D, then we would be concerned. So we have a lot of Cs right now because that's where we are, and that's average. But that's a, a new line of thinking. And that's something for teachers and parents and students to wrap their head around because it, it changed grading for us.
Just last, one thing. On your interview process, learning to be an interviewee, I guess as much as anything, once you become accomplished, you can read the interviewer. I think that's a key aspect of this whole thing on successful interviews. You're, you're prowling brand-new ground here. I hope you're capturing this and that we can, as a lessons learned, continuing understanding of what's taking place here and what you're accomplishing, that we can capture that for posterity.
On Fridays, we do after-action reports.
Great.
Particularly for larger events to make sure that we hit what worked, what didn't work, what would we change for next year. I too think it's important, important to kind of create a historical record because not all of us will be here for forever, like none of us will be. But the history of Moore Innovative is important to capture, and, and every, literally every week, it's, some of it's on the fly, you know, as we're trying to figure out what to do.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, excellent job. Please, of course, tell folks that, you know, that very proud of the work being done. It's really interesting to start a new school, and I think you guys are doing an awesome job at it. I did have a little bit of a hodgepodge, I guess, as well. So one thing that was interesting that struck me is the smaller school vibe, kind of increasing honesty and accountability. And so kind of to line up with Mr. Benway saying a little bit, thinking about the kids that fit the profile for Red Wolves but aren't Red Wolves. You know, how can we continue to take innovation and spread it? I know it's, sometimes we get so busy that we forget to do that part, but if it's truly an innovative approach, I think it'd be really cool to expose to the kids back at home schools that, you know, might not have a chance to get there. The question I had was about recruitment. And so I always find that fascinating, recruiting students to a new school in a new environment. So my question was, what, what worked and what would you change for the next round? Is there anything that, that you found would work better this time around, or I'm curious, how it works?
Well, only done it once.
Right.
So, and, and it was fast and furious because of the timing of when I was hired, right? So February was all recruitment, and it was a lot. So we are replicating a lot of that, but over a longer period of time. So this time, I'm doing parents first in the month of November. So we're at every middle school, every Moore County Middle School. We also will have an, an open night at Sand Hills Community College. So I'll finish there with a December 1st meeting. We'll take a little bit of time off, and then when we come back in January, I'm in the schools. So January, we're in the schools, pretty hot and heavy for about 10 days. And then we'll do another parent session at Sand Hills again. So we'll give yet another opportunity in case we grab a, a student during that timeframe that then wants to come, you know, the parent's now interested. So I felt like we needed to make sure we had one more. My intent at this point, Kate and I've got some work to figure out, but my intent at this point is to open the application period the beginning of December and to leave it open until the 1st of February. We had 100 and, we ended up with 122 applicants last year. We did interview 100% of those students. I still want to do that. I also have a school of students right now.
Right.
So that's pretty daunting for me. So I'm trying to figure out, can I do some rolling interviews and kind of start in December to kind of get through those students? Because I do think that the process worked. I think we hit the right targets. The student body itself is outstanding. You saw how diverse it is. It came from a wide range of not only demographics, but home schools. And I'm really proud of that. So I feel like that part worked, but it took a lot of personal time. And so I'm trying to figure out, you know, I do anticipate it being more popular this year. We are, we are field, fielding calls and emails every week. And so I, I anticipate it's going to be more than 122, and so that's a little concerning. But I do think that getting to know the students that way was the best thing I could have done. So, you know, the paper, whatever, that gave me a little bit of information, but eye contact and working with students and seeing, you know, even students who had behavioral issues but who had made a big change, or who owned those behavior issues and were ready for something different. Like I got that from them in meeting with them. I wouldn't have gotten that had I not done that. So I'm not ready to give that away to anybody.
Yeah, that's hard. That's going to be hard.
It is, you know. But, so we'll see. We'll see how this goes. I don't know. I'm sure we'll adjust again, but.
And the target is 90? Is that?
70.
70. I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Great. And then the only comment I had was, I love the repack idea, just because I think it's such a critical time for kids to understand themselves and what they need and what they, and to have them express that and then engage in it, I think is really cool. I think it'll serve them for the rest of their lives. So, great job. Thank you.
First of all, thank you. You're doing a great job, and it's, it's known. You sit in a unique position to be able, in my opinion, to, to reflect on Moore County Schools Way and where we might be missing some things. And I think it, you can have the unique opportunity to provide a lot of positive feedback for, for where we can see where we're missing the boat. And it's just, we need to take advantage of that and not add more to what you're doing, but take, take from. And is there anything that the school board can do presently for you that would, would be beneficial? Do you need anything from us at this moment in time?
I don't need anything other than everyone talking about Moore Innovative High School.
Okay.
I think folks understanding who we serve is critical. It's a real misnomer, helping people understand that we are serving students who are historically not successful at school.
Right.
That's who we're after.
Yeah.
And that looks like all kinds of kids. And so, you know, sometimes I, I feel a lot about, you only take the gifted kids. Absolutely not. You only take the kids who aren't gifted. about, you only take the gifted kids. Absolutely not. You only take the kids who aren't gifted. Absolutely not. You know, we'll take anybody that fits that target demographic. And so that demographic's pretty wide open. We're looking for kids who are historically not connected to their education, period. That's who we're looking for. And so that's helpful for me, if you can help me spread that word, because that's the piece where parents connect with us and go, oh, maybe that's my child, right? I also think, I anticipate that the results over time are going to be outstanding. I really do. And I don't ever want there to be a mindset that it's a school of really, really, really highly intelligent kids. And that's why it's good. I want it to be known that it's because these kids are working hard with a team of adults who have got their back. And that's the story that needs to be told.
Thank you. And I would have benefited greatly from being in your class.
You can still come.
Yeah, I'll come up.
I just, I'm just so incredibly proud. And the questions were perfect. I really don't have any questions. I just can't wait to see the results. And thank you for your leadership. You've got a great team. You've got, you know, you're thinking about all the things that I just highlighted, the universal screening, the student input, your voice, your choice, read, write, think, and speak. That's incredible. So just keep up the good work, and I can't wait to see you in action. So thank you for being here today. It's incredible.
Thanks for your leadership, Ms. Conne.
Of course.
We're grateful.
Next, we'll hear from Dr. Kenna Wilson, who is our principal at Community Learning Center at Pickney.
Good morning.
Yep, you are good to go. And you've got a-
Here, red means go.
Oh, red means go. Okay.
And Dr. Wilson, you have a clicker right next to you, and you can go ahead and get started whenever you're ready. Yep, unless you want Stephanie to.
All right, here we go. I just, I want to take this opportunity to thank you. I'm so proud to be here to talk about the Community Learning Center at Pickney and our improvement efforts. But before I get really into this, I need to just thank you for your continued support and belief in the Community Learning Center at Pickney. Because of that support, I feel like Moore County Schools has redefined alternative education, and you have created another viable choice for learners, and unique learners at that. You know, you've created a safe, nurturing academic environment for them, a space for learners that they can succeed. And it doesn't exist in all districts. It just doesn't. I want you to know that. And it exists because of your continued support. And it not only helps the students in my building, but the impact, I think, of this unique alternative education that Moore County Schools offers also impacts our feeder schools positively in what they can do. So I just would miss that opportunity. I know I would get into this and forget. So I needed to say that first, okay? So I will go on from my introduction. All right. So the alternative school accountability model, this is something that the Board of Education chooses each year and approves. And it is different. It looks different. And it should look different. We are alternative. You're looking at, we are looking at three components. 20% is calculated as student persistence. Student persistence in this case is, does a student who enrolls at our school remain enrolled in a school for the entire school year? So that doesn't necessarily mean they stay in my school. They can move, and they must enroll in another school, okay? So it's just, they have to stay enrolled in a school. So they persist. And remember, these are the students, by virtue of being alternative, who typically are disengaged and are likely to drop out. 20% of it is school achievement, and you understand that, that measure, traditional measure for academic achievement. And 60% is based on growth. And you also understand that. The change, they give us ratings each year, progressing, maintaining, or declining. And you can see on the slide, the different percentages that would qualify you in that. There's some other details in there as we go through that if you might have questions about, but I can share that as you have, if you have questions. But this is very, when we look at this accountability model, we feel like it's very mission-focused for us, and we take that serious in all of our decisions in school improvement, for you to know. And while we talk about mission-focused, we work to make sure that we're aligned with the Moore County School strategic plan, and we feel like we are. We have a lot of commonalities, obviously, if you compare our vision, mission, and our beliefs certainly with the priorities of Moore County Schools. We are focused on excellence in alternative education. We are focused on growth and creating and helping support our students in becoming productive citizens in their community. We want to and have to have parental support and involvement, community support. We are focused on meeting or exceeding growth and increasing our proficiency academically. I think where you'll see what is alternative is the intensive, the intensity, the intensive nature in our vision, mission, and core beliefs, and just the individualized and the more intense piece. And that allows us to be aligned with the purpose that we serve in our state as an alternative education setting. Our demographics, it's, you need to be very aware, as you look at our demographics, that this changes almost every Wednesday. And the reason it's Wednesday is because we want to accommodate our families who are already there, because when we get new students, you don't want your bus route to change every day for families. So we've chosen Wednesdays as the day where we can welcome new students. And so then families who already have existing bus routes know, hey, you know. And it also helps our kids and teachers to know Wednesdays are the days where we welcome new students. But that changes, I mean, there's been days where I think the most we've ever had on a Wednesday, that was not this year, but previous years was 14, come in new students. And there may be a Wednesday where we have one. That's a slow Wednesday, okay? But these kids come throughout the school year. So that's just important to remember, demographics change for us. And it's also important to remember, and I'm very proud of this, that our school has created systems, so we are uniquely adept at supporting those transitions and that newness, and how our student population changes. And it's, it is, again, it is, it's necessary to have that frequent transition. And that's another way we can support the feeder schools as a whole, right? That if a student needs us, we're there, okay? As we look at our school growth, the more traditional standard and part of our accountability model, obviously, and our performance, you will note that we have not met expected growth. And if you look at these percentages historically, this is my eighth year at Pickney, even prior to my arrival at Pickney, these are pretty, we hover around here. The negative 2.16 was the closest we got at meeting growth so far. But the message that I want to share with you as our board and with our community, and my team and my students want to share, in talking about standard academic accountability measures, people will often say, all the reasons why our students cannot or will not reach, you know, the academic standard. And that is not what we're about at Pickney, okay? We may get there a different way. We may not get there on the same pace as other folks, but for us, we're just not going to accept that narrative. And we've not accepted the narrative. And we continue to dig in. We continue to work. We continue to try in spite of whatever obstacles, and there are real obstacles there, okay? It almost feels like a line in the sand, and we just continue to, it's been placed in front of us, and as a team and as a school family, we just keep working to try to get there with no excuses. And we'll keep pushing ourselves, and that's including our students. And we will get to that line. And our goal is to go across that line considerably. So that's our hope. And we feel like it is, that's our vision. It's going to happen. And you can note the maintaining, declining, maintaining, and maintaining there. The declining in 2023, again, was based on the, those different percentages, and how many students are tested, and all those things. But we make no excuses for that. And I just want the board to know that we are, we are going to be progressing, and we will exceed growth. So as we begin to talk about the goals for our school, we really tried, again, I'm going to go back to mission-focused, and really looking at what the main thing is, right? If we're looking at persistence, growth, and proficiency, we felt like the persistence measure, keeping kids in school, keeping kids engaged, getting more kids back, right, is the point. And if we can get that accomplished and lose zero students, then we're doing what we need to do, right? So two years ago, if you looked at our school plan, the baseline was at 83% for the number of students who remained enrolled in a school for the entire school year. So we're starting this school improvement plan cycle at 92%. So we're really proud of that. And that's because of the work digging in. And Dr. Locklear, I think, opened the meeting with, you know, digging deeper and finding out, you know, and asking ourselves the hard questions about how to keep our kids. So we're really, we're really proud of that. And you can see that our goal is 100% losing zero students, making sure that we reach that persistence goal. And how we want to do that, these are just some of the action steps that we feel like, as a team, makes it happen. We want to get better and continue to get better at what we know works. We know that PLTs work. We know this in Moore County. Again, I want to go back to the Moore County Schools' way. We know that those four pillars in this process and the protocols work. And it looks different at Pickney, and it should look different at Pickney. At Pickney, all of the staff is involved in this. It is not just teachers. It is teacher assistants. It is our social worker. It is our counselors. It is our behavior specialists. They all are involved in this process. And the protocols may not just be looking at data related to an academic formative assessment. We're going to be looking at attendance data. We're going to be looking at behavior plan data. We're going to be looking at, gosh, parent contact data. I mean, we're looking at all kinds of that. But we're doing it within a framework and a protocol that works. And because we pull those pieces in, we continue to try to strive to just get really great at it, right? We tell our kids that they need, when they come to us, you need to pack your bag, right? So you can reach your goal and travel to the place that you're set to travel, right, post-secondary. And we say, behavior, attendance, and grades. Pack your bag, right? So as we look at these action steps, getting our kids to persist, all the reasons why kids stop going to school, we want to make sure we're really good at packing our own bags and understanding how we can keep them, okay? So we look at our second goal, and we have two goals, two goals, very focused, again, is on that growth. And our baseline is starting at, you can see it, negative 2.95. And we are shooting to exceed growth. And I think I've talked a little bit about that. And again, our growth has fluctuated, but it's remained about the same, with some improvement, obviously. But we're getting closer, and we're going to get there. The action steps that I'd like to share and talk about that are going to get us there. Again, I want to return to, again, consistency in the Moore County Schools' way. We embrace the fundamentals that we know work. The secondary instructional framework is what works. We know this, okay? So we want to make sure that we are doing it at the highest level of fidelity. We want to make sure that we are using the high-yield strategies that we know work, and getting just excellent at it, just getting excellent at it. And that means everyone. We have some teachers who come, and they are residency, they are licensed to the residency teacher program, and they're fabulous. But we have to address that they need to be learning that, relearning that, and learning it again, right? And applying it, and monitoring, and making sure that happens. And again, you'll see that we wrap in behavior interventions with academic interventions, because our students need to have those to reach a state of being able to receive academic instruction. Edge annuity is something that we have across other high schools and in some middle schools. But edge annuity is a tool that is used, I think, uniquely at CLC, because at CLC, we not only can recover credits, but we can also earn core course credits with edge annuity. And we work on data talks with our students. There are a depth of reports that you can use in many different ways to track learning and teach students executive functioning skills around those reports, so that they can learn and reach, reach the instructional level that they're, they need to, to earn that high school credit, okay? So edge annuity is a really important tool for us. And it also has given our students hope. They've been able to accelerate. They've been able to catch up. They've been able to, through your support and the support of people in this room, we've been able to offer them, you know, foreign language. We've been offering, you know, Spanish. You know, we're looking at possibly our student, last year, we had a couple of them that were going to hit 28 credits. This year, I think we might have one. Typically, it's that 28 credit, or 22 credit diploma at an alternative school. But again, this is what I'm saying, you're helping redefine what alternative education is. And you know, I will talk on and on and on about this. And I don't want to take all your time. But truly, if you look at these action steps, it is putting data in the hands of all staff and students and parents. You know, we are showing parents how to read these edge annuity reports, okay? Because they are so critical. They are partners in this, right? And so it, we're reviewing lessons, and we are looking and considerate of each child's needs. And because we are small, we can do that, right? And if we, and if we couldn't, I don't know that we'd be getting the outcomes that we're getting, basically. I know we wouldn't, so. I actually asked one of our students this morning, I had to go talk to the board, what is like, real quick, real quick, what is a thing that helps you here? That you've been to a middle school and another high school, and what helps you here? It's not crowded. And I was like, okay, good, good. So I'm thinking the small, okay, great. You know, it's not all these other things. Okay. But anyway, yeah, but I love it because, you know, it's about them, and they know it. It's about them. We are removing obstacles. And if we can get good at this, I just, you know, gosh. Anyway, again, I could talk all morning, so. Yeah, so I hope I didn't fly through too fast. Thank you. Summary questions?
All right, I'm going to go first this time, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
So can you give, and Kate might need to help as well, but how do you calculate growth for this student, for this type of student? To me, that is a puzzle, because you've got all different-
It's the same way to calculate growth in this measure.
So if a 10th grader, or like a 9th grader comes in, they're taking EOC assessments. Can you paint a picture of it for us?
Yeah, I would say on this measure, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kate, but in this measure, it's just like everybody else. Our growth is measured just like everybody else.
Okay.
At Pickney, we have other measures that we can do, because, you know, we can see the growth, right? And so we have data about accountability and different data sources where we can see those steps that they're taking. But when it comes to state accountability, it is calculated just like every other school.
So I'm going to jump in for just a second.
Go ahead, Kate.
So state and federal accountability comes into play here. So Ken is absolutely right. It is the exact same measure. So what that means is for K7, so they teach 7th, they have 7th, 6th, and 7th there.
Yeah, 612.
Those students, 612, thank you. I always remember if they're 6th or they're not.
Yeah.
Okay, so the 6th and 7th graders are based on the thing that we've talked about before, which is comparative to the state. So where did the student start or leave last year compared to where they are this year, compared to, did they grow as much as the state, okay? In 8th grade up, so 8th grade and then your end-of-course assessments in the high school, they are using what's called the predictive model for growth, okay? So the predictive model's a little bit different in that what they do is they look at multiple testing data. You have to have three data points over five years, or sorry, three, sorry, three data points over two years, sorry, in order to get a predictive score. So what they do is they're projecting, like, based on history for this student, this is where we anticipate the student to achieve. Did the student then meet or exceed that measure? And so when Ken is talking about how it's the same as the state, it is. Hers is more of the predictive model because of the number of students that she serves, which is the one where they look at, did the student meet or exceed their projected, where they would have performed comparative, again, to how the average student in that grade- and subject achieves across the state. So, again, it's still comparative to that state measure.
It's incredibly tough.
Very, very. And we've talked before about how being able to get a student to proficiency is a very different thing than being able to grow a student. You know, I can grow a kid from, I'll use sixth grade to seventh grade. I can do that easily. Can I get that kid to a seventh grade level if they started at a fourth? Maybe not in one year. And so, what Ken is doing is she's closing that gap so that as they move forward, they can be more successful, getting them more aligned for that growth measure to where we expect them to be for proficiency.
That's a lot of data to keep up with. And do you have the tools you need? Do you have the instructional? I mean, I know we have a lot. But if you could, you know, be queen of the day, is there a tool that you would wish you had that you don't have?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am, I, I would, I would say that we are extremely grateful for the support of our colleagues in curriculum instruction, technology. Gosh, I can go through Student Support Services because at our school, at all, Moore County Schools Police, it, they all come in to that instructional piece, right? Because when students come to us, they come to us for lots of reasons, but a hundred percent come to us because they're in some kind of crisis, right? And so, it takes a lot of interventions, right? Yeah, the wraparound, yes, ma'am. But we can't ever leave that academic piece out, right?
I really like the, the point that you're using data notebooks or data tools to bring that clarity and to show the student how what they do impacts their learning and their success. That "pack your bags" is a great acronym. And I really am impressed with your leadership, your involvement. I got to go to the graduation. And so, just keep doing what you're doing. But please let us know if there's something you need that we can help with.
Thank you.
Well, I'll go follow over quick. I just think you're a true blessing. The school is a true blessing to the students that you serve, and so, I want to thank you for that. I don't want to go too far down the rabbit hole because I will get nerdy about this. But I am curious how we determine the students that end up on your growth profile as opposed to homeschool, their homeschool, or how, what is the cutoff point? What is the time? What is, I'm just curious.
So, I'm going to flash you all the way back to when you were a teacher, okay? So, what we do is the students who go to CLC are her students, okay? However, when it comes time for EVOs, which is the program that is used to evaluate growth, what we do every April is EVOs roster verification, okay? And what we do on EVOs roster verification is the teachers and the principal all look at, how long was that student on our roster? What percentage of time were they on our roster, okay? And then, in addition to that, of the time they were on their roster, what percent of their instruction in that grade and subject was I responsible for? So, in the most simple explanation, a third-grade student teaches reading. That student receives no additional services in reading. That teacher had them all year, a hundred percent, a hundred percent of their instruction. But if a student is receiving EC services, for example, which is something that, that Dr. Wilson works very hard to make sure her students receive, then they might be splitting that English instruction. So, one teacher is getting a certain value, the other teacher is the other way. In terms of how much of a percent Dr. Wilson's students get, it tends to be based on how long were they on her roster. So, a student who grows, it's not how it's measured, but for ease of explanation, let's say that they grew ten points, okay? They spent fifty percent of their year at Cranes Creek Middle School and fifty percent of their year at CLC. CLC receives fifty percent of that growth. And so, students are essentially weighted in the final calculation based on roster verification.
Interesting. And that, that explains a lot, so, yeah. Something I had always wondered.
Great question, Mr. Dawson.
Yeah, so, I had always wondered that. And I always, now that makes me think of other questions that I won't ask now. But, very cool. Thank you. Thank you for explaining that.
Dr. Wilson, I apologize for not having gotten down to see you yet this year. The start of the school has been kind of choppy.
It's okay.
We'll get down, we'll get down there.
I know you will. You, you don't disappoint, we love you.
Like it or not. I have rewritten this question three times. I hope I've got it about right.
Okay.
Moore County envisions growing by leaps and bounds over the course of the next few years, probably by, in terms of tens of thousands of people. What are the special challenges that are going to accrue to you given that growth, aside from just the numbers?
The challenges, if, if Moore County Schools and when, not if, when Moore County Schools grows, well.
When, when Moore County grows.
When Moore County grows, okay. Well, I think the, the level of support that I, you know, our school receives from, from our board and from our senior staff and from the directors that are, you know, the colleagues in this room, we'll be ready. I, I, you know, if the numbers of students who require an alternative option, because I, I really, I mean, I think it's very evident that Moore County Schools can be proud that alternative education is a viable option in Moore County. It just is. It's another option. It is not, it is not, the perception of the traditional alternative education school is, is, I, it's no more in Moore County Schools. And so, I, what I want to say is, the support that is offered, I have no doubt, and I have great trust, that it will continue to be and, and we'll face that with solutions. And we'll, we'll be sure that we can offer this and continue to offer this to the students who need it most. We are very deliberate in our systems of how students are chosen, who are referred, who come to the alternative program. We also have students that, that come and stay, but we have students who go back. We had a, for lack of a better word, recidivism rate of eighty percent in this last year. Eighty percent of the kids stayed at their school, the children that transitioned back. Two, I want to say, out of that, two who came back made the choice. And we had a deliberate system and process in which the kids don't just get to choose, families don't get to choose. We have people, people who are sitting in this room that look at data and make the decision, is this the best option for the student, right? So, so, we will have solutions for that growth. I have no doubt because what makes me, I, I, so many reasons I'm proud to be in Moore County Schools. You know, this is my thirty-first year in public education. And I got to tell you, I am so proud to be a part of this team is that there will be a place for kids who need this option. You will make sure of it. You will make sure of it. I, I feel sure. And my team is ready and willing, so, that's my answer. It's long-winded, but you know, I, I love my work.
Great, super. Just for your information, in its infancy is an idea that we might decide to grow our own EC teachers, beginning in introduction in high school, support them with scholarships through college, and bring them back.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, I think your focal, you as a focal point for that sort of thing would bode well for the future.
Absolutely, absolutely.
If we could get that going.
Anything to grow our own teachers who have a, a talent and a heart for students who are, you know, have needs, yeah. Love that idea.
Start introducing the idea in high school.
Be happy to, be happy to talk and support that.
Thank you very much. Thanks for what you do.
Yes, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. I know it takes special hearts to work at, at CLC Pickney, and, and we do appreciate that. I guess my question reflects on, piggybacking off of both of them. What is the criteria of the student that does get accepted to CLC Pickney? Like, when you're screening them, and they're different than more innovative high school, but what is the biggest difference in, in how you operate with, with those set of students? Choosing them or getting assigned? Some, sometimes you take them, or you, or given them.
Right, so, alternative education, just by statute, is students who are deemed at-risk, right? And so, students who are at-risk come at risk for lots of reasons. And it can be because they have been referred because they're having behavioral challenges. They can be referred because they're having attendance issues. I would say almost a hundred percent of my students come already chronically absent, right? And that's not a stereotype, that's real. That's part of why we exist, okay? You can have students who have mental health issues and students who, being in a large comprehensive high school or middle school is just too much. We have students who are coming from Department of Juvenile Justice settings, therapeutic foster homes because they have different struggles. So, we look at all of those. We, we can be a step down from Department of Juvenile Justice, you know, where they come and they're, they, they honestly get some success and heal, and then develop a plan and head on to high school or head on to middle school and, you know. And sometimes it's determined through data and through the team and parent-student feedback that the alternative setting is the place that meets their needs, so they stay. But, yeah, it, it, some kids come with all that, right? And, and that's the reality. Moore County Schools has made sure there is a place, literally, for every student. When, when I say that, I truly mean it. And that, for that, I am so grateful. My team is so grateful. And that is the difference, I think. But we serve students who are academically gifted. We serve students who have, you know, significant disabilities. I mean, for the whole range of student, right? We like to say they all have gifts at CLC, and they do. But we, we, it is a misnomer. I think in the same way I was listening to Ms. Secconi about her student population, there's a lot of misperception and misnomers about an alternative education setting. And I think with your assistance, we have changed that in a lot of ways. We continue to advocate and, you know, be strong, telling our story, you know, telling our kids stories. But that, that's, that's basically the answer. I mean, they can come with lots of.
Okay.
Yeah.
And with Dr. Wilson and the Academic and Student Support Services team, we have a comprehensive, kind of, I won't call it an interview, but bid meeting, best interest and determination meeting, where the referring school and the CLC staff and Student Support Services, we get together and we have a comprehensive look at the student to see if they're going to be successful in that referral to Dr. Wilson's school. So, it really is a comprehensive team approach in that application.
All right. Who are some of the, our partners in our community that spend time with you guys and that you use their resources?
Oh, gosh, we have churches.
Right.
They have been huge supporters. Churches from the immediate area, but also all the way in Pinehurst. I mean, churches have just wrapped around us. We have businesses, local businesses that have, have helped. We have.
How so specifically, if you don't mind, for the businesses?
Businesses, so.
Job opportunities or?
So, well, some, when we help kids with jobs, reaching out. But when we've done different things, you know, one year, we celebrated and went, took the whole school to Carowinds, and it was amazing for Science Day, for Engineering Science Day. And so, we had a lot of businesses help us with that. We've had, we built the house with Habitat and Sand Hills, and we had a lot of donations for our students with tools and things. So, different donations in that way. We also have just, just generous, you know, civic-minded citizens in Moore County that will help us with our food insecure needs, housing insecurity of our students and their families, clothing needs. You know, you name it. When you're working with some at-risk kids, things come up. And we've been so fortunate. We partner strongly with Moore Buddies. A lot of partnership with Moore Buddies. We're branching into the care group with Moore Buddies, that, that side of the house, basically. That's happening with an alternative suspension program that they've rejuvenated. Gosh, we partner with Department of Juvenile Justice, our probation officers. There's a very close partnership with our probation officers because they are part of our students' lives and part of their journey and helping, they're focused on the same thing, success. Success for our kids post-secondary. So, gosh, there's a lot of, there's a lot of partners, for sure, for sure.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
For your work. And please tell everyone, we're so very proud of them.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, our next school will be Connect Academy with Jamie Burr.
Good morning, and thank you for being here today.
Good morning. I'm the proud principal of Connect Academy. My name is Jamie Burr. I believe we've all met. So, I will just go ahead and get started. This year, our school improvement team did rewrite some of our vision, mission, and our core beliefs. And the reason that we did that was to further align with the district strategic plan and the district vision. You'll notice that some of it sounds very familiar, but we did that on purpose because what we really wanted to highlight were some of the board priorities and that were the school of choice option for Moore County Schools. And we wanted to also kind of signpost how we are contributing to Moore County Schools being the first and best choice. The demographics of our school have remained fairly consistent over the last couple of years that we've been in existence. We do have a lot of trans vanity of students. Students come in and out at the semester, and sometimes they're with us for the year, and then they do something else for the year. But this is the snapshot of day forty from the previous school year. And our total number of students is constantly changing. We're currently sitting at three oh nine, three hundred and nine students at our school. So, part of that consistently changing is that we're seating blended students as we have those seats open. We want to fill those. This is our school's overall grade level proficiency. This is K-twelve data, or three-twelve data, I should say. This is encompassing both of our virtual and our K-five blended students. With blended, just to note that for blended, our teachers are responsible for forty percent of that teaching in the K-five model because they're with us for two days of the week, and then they continue their homeschooling curriculum for the three other days of the week. And then, this is the breakdown by content. This is our three-eight data. We have an all-time high in reading this past year. This includes, once again, virtual and blended. And we do have a focus on math in the coming year. We did adopt to get a Eureka Math curriculum for our K-eight school. So, that is new for all of our teachers. We're working very closely with the specialists to make sure that we are on target, on pace, and chunking that appropriately. This is our science performance data. This is fifth, eighth, and Kate, I believe this also includes our biology, correct? Okay. We did have, as a state, new science standards this past year. So, this was the first time that students were assessed with the new science standards. So, we maintained our previous score. We hit an all-time high with our twenty-three, twenty-four at that ninety-one percent. But we maintained our previous year at that seventy-seven-point-three. And we're looking at raising that this year. We're also working with the science specialists, especially with biology, to make sure that we're in alignment with each other. And our biology teacher is working with the other high school biology teachers in that PLT. Same thing with fifth and eighth grade science as well. Something to highlight, our eighth-grade science teacher is a rock star. She does provide, once a month, hands-on labs for students to come in. And if they cannot come in, they participate virtually. They're partnered with somebody inside the classroom. And so, they work collaboratively with that peer virtually and/or in the classroom. Very unique opportunity. This month, we're dissecting frogs, if you want to come join. Our school improvement, or our school growth and our accountability model, we met exceeded, or we met growth this past year, and we'll talk about growth as one of our school improvement goals as well. Uh, one of the things to note as well, that we look at each individual child and growing them from when we get them, uh, to where they want to go. Uh, it's very much, uh, an important thing for us to work with our home learning partners. Most of the time, that is a parent in the home or the homeschooling parent, um, especially for blended. So, moving forward, we're going to talk about goal one and goal two. I'm going to talk about them together because goal one is about achievement and goal two is about growth. So goal one, uh, is increasing our overall grade level proficiency from fifty-eight point eight to sixty-eight point eight, and those are very tiny charts, and they are in your data binders. Um, so we do have a lot of data at our school because we are a K-12 school, and that's why all those charts are on there. And then with our second goal, like I said, it's focused on growth. Um, and so we want to hit that zero line, uh, and then hit exceeding growth that second year. So our expectation is to meet that positive two point oh one by twenty-twenty-seven. All right, moving on to our action steps for goal one and goal two. And so the reason that we put them together is because if we're working on achievement, we're also impacting growth at the same time. So these goals are, uh, dual in that nature. Uh, for the first action step is aligning their PDP goals, that's Professional Development Plan, um, and they, they're setting those goals together in their PLTs, they're data-driven, um, and not just focused on achievement, but also growth as well. Uh, we engage in the PLT process weekly in each grade band, and we focus on those four questions. What do we want them to know, learn? How are we intervening when they don't get it? And how are we pushing and challenging our students every day? Uh, we'll implement and monitor high-quality instruction. Our teachers are creating their lesson plans. They are the ones who are doing the teaching, uh, and it's aligned to the standards and the curriculum. We use clear and standardized learning targets as well, so that students have clarity on what they're expected to learn, uh, and it's integrated into the lesson and referred to often. And, uh, like I said, uh, we, PLT every week, but we've also integrated our MTSS process into our PLTs. So we do a data review, we talk about core fidelity, uh, intervention planning, our action steps, and reflecting on what's working, what's not working. Uh, we also have a comprehensive intervention plan, and that's focused on achievement and growth as well. Uh, like I already mentioned, our database, uh, our PLTs are data-based and we do reflect. Um, we do also focus on the fidelity of transition planning for our students. Um, that's for our students moving between grade bands from fifth to sixth grade, which is a big jump from elementary school to middle school. And then we're also, since we're K-12, we have our eighth graders going to high school. So we want to make sure that they're adequately prepared and ready for high school and what all of that has to offer. This also includes our EC students for our transition meetings between our fifth and sixth and eighth and ninth grade students. And then also, in the other, uh, perspective, the transition planning for students coming to our school. Are you ready? Are you prepared? Do you understand what the expectations are and what you need to do as a virtual learner or, uh, integrating with the public school for the first time for blended? So we have a pretty robust, um, onboarding structure for our middle schoolers and our high schoolers. Our elementary families work with our parents, um, to make sure that they're ready for that environment as well. Uh, our action steps for goal one and goal two are really focused on the Moore County Schools way and implementing how that works for us. Uh, that's one of our main focuses this year. All right, goal three. Uh, we'll increase our overall enrollment. Uh, the vision for Connect Academy is continuing growth of the school, uh, and so we're looking at increasing that by twenty percent. Uh, notably, last year, uh, we've already hit a ten percent increase, um, from last year to this year. So this is a pretty reasonable goal for the future, um, and one of the things that we're going to continue to work on. Um, the goal is to enroll students that are not currently enrolled in Moore County Schools as well, um, offering a different learning environment to further engage Moore County students that are currently here and to maintain enrollment for current Moore County students as well. Uh, some of these action steps are, um, some things that I do independently with my other, uh, my assistant principal, my other counterpart, and some that we do collectively as a staff. So I work with, um, our Chief Communications Officer, Charlie Bachelor, to create and distribute public media that includes radio ads, um, Facebook announcements that are posted and pushed out, marketing ads like that. Um, and we're advertising online, not just to network, but also increase the awareness outside of Moore County as well. Uh, we collaborate with other Moore County Schools administrators and counselors, uh, especially at the high school when it comes to high school scheduling, about the transfer options and what we offer as a school of choice, um, as Connect Academy. Uh, I work with our staff, um, and so does our assistant principal, on collaborating to create our marketing materials. We have two beautiful brochures, one for blended and one for virtual. Um, and part of that is being able to not only hand that to our teachers to help continue to promote, but also being able to say, oh, you're interested in this local business. Hey, would you like to have these at your, um, establishment to help promote our school? In addition to that, we also have talking points that is shared between each grade band and each side of our school, so that all of our staff know what all of our staff are doing, um, so that they're knowledgeable and can talk in, um, clearly about each portion of our school, um, not only to promote Connect Academy inside our community, but also outside our community. We also update our website and have an effective social media presence. So just to summarize, uh, Connect Academy is a unique school, and we have great things to celebrate. I'm proud to be the principal of the staff, the community, um, and this growth and achievement. This is the plan that we've laid together, um, as our school improvement team, but I'd like to acknowledge the true partnership it takes, not only as a staff, but also with our home learning partners and the board, to make sure that this work continues to move forward. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, who wants to go first this time?
How do you, um, maintain communication with your parents?
Oh, great question. So, uh, I'll go backwards. With our high schoolers, we, um, email a lot. Uh, so we're emailing not only our students, but our parents as well, and, uh, I have a weekly newsletter that goes out on Sundays, and that has two sides to it. And so one side is virtual and one side's blended, and in the middle are common dates that we need to know. Sometimes, um, the second page of it is posters and whatnot, uh, and our counselor also sends separate emails about scholarship opportunities, um, phone calls, and, uh, she has a counselor newsletter that she sends out to the high schoolers as well, so that they know about all of their options. Middle school, very similar. We send out emails to parents, they post in Canvas, um, we make phone calls as well. In elementary school, they rely heavily on dojo, class dojo. Um, so same idea, it's constant communication back and forth. Uh, and with blended, we're talking with families in person a lot at Carline as well.
And it's not a struggle for you? You seem to have good communication with your parents, right?
Yes, we do, yeah, absolutely. Thanks for asking that.
Yeah, that's what I was really getting at, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, you're great. Uh, I understand exactly where you're going with that. That lets me talk about our, um, parent agreement.
Right.
As well. So we have a parent agreement that our family sign when they, um, enroll at our school, and the expectation is that you do stay in communication with us, because if we're not in communication, then we don't have that necessary partnership. So we have a lot of familial engagement at our school, which is unique.
Well, uh, great to see you, great job.
Thank you.
First question I had was, what was the eighth grade science teacher's name?
Tanya Koch.
Cool. Make sure you give our appreciation.
I certainly will. She's a total rock star. She's also our robotics coach.
Awesome, fantastic, yep. Um, and that kind of leads me to my first question, which was, um, what is your, like, current, um, number of virtual teachers and, like, grade levels that they serve?
We have three elementary school teachers, um, two in the K-three, and then one is a four-five teacher, and we also have a half-time EC teacher. We share her, uh, with the district level. Uh, she supports beginning teachers in other schools that are in need of EC assistance. Uh, middle school, we have four, one for each content, ELA, math, science, and social studies, and the same structure for high school. Um, and our middle school and high schooler, high school teachers and four-five teach all contents. So our high school teachers, uh, our max number of preps for our, one of our high school teachers is eleven.
Hmm, wow, okay. Great. Um, the other thing that kind of struck me was, have you done any, or have we done any dive onto the comparative data of other virtual schools throughout the state? Uh, our, there's Kate, sorry. Cause that's something I've always been curious about, is because it's such a unique type of program and unique type of setup, do we do comparative?
So there's really not a lot to compare to, is the short answer. Uh, the longer answer is, we have looked at multiple schools that are virtual in their design. Uh, most of them are not K-12, um, but, uh, we are standing near the head of that pack of those that are virtual. Uh, it's something that actually I'm getting ready to start that dive for this year, to last year's, now I'm working on this one's.
Thank you.
Um, so we're working on those sort of dives now. Um, but, uh, more schools have popped up that are considered virtual. Finding a K-12 in a moderate-sized district, uh, with a population the size of hers is hard enough, and then you add on top of that the blended program, which is very unique in the state. Um, and keep in mind that, uh, Ms. Burr's data is combined with that blended.
Absolutely.
So it's, whatever we find, we have to take that, there, there's an asterisk on it, because the blended program is lumped in with all of hers, which is not nothing, necessarily something we can find across the state.
Yeah, yeah, and so I'll, I'll just, um, I'll just state that I think that is a real opportunity for us to market. Like, when you talk about marketing, I think that's a true opportunity. Um, and I would say, um, you being able to break it down, the virtual students.
Yes.
Into their own kind of category in some way, and it may be, I know the data gets messy, but, um, even in general, just to be able to say, our virtual students are performing at a level that we're not seeing across the state. Um, I think, cause that's, Scott was kind of just knowing the teachers and knowing the program, I think that's a really oomph to your marketing strategy.
And to add to that, all of our teachers are veteran staff. Uh, we do not have any B-teacher, B-E, BT teachers, that's my fault, um, in our virtual school. They're all experienced, and almost all of them have been with the school since the start. And another piece that I talk about with parents that come to us or are shopping around to the virtual options in the area, is that we are, we have real teachers creating real lessons and providing live instruction. Um, and so that's not something that is as common, and so I'm, I capitalize on that.
Correct, yeah. Anyway, great job.
Yeah.
I'm really glad to see it all growing, and, um, I look forward to talking to more people about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, it reminds me, this is another choice. We are the best choice. Um, and it also, just listening to you, all the grade levels, all the content, all the communication, it almost reminds me of a one-room schoolhouse, just a little bit. You know, think back to the eighteen hundreds. But this is modern-day, all the things, um, it's just incredible. The home learning partners, I like the way you phrase that, and that was kind of my question, Kate, you know, that's an incredible piece. How does that relate to EVOs growth? Yeah.
Come here.
Thank you, Kate. This is why Jamie was very excited I was coming. So, when you're talking about the blended program and EVOs growth, the teachers, uh, in this case, from the perspective of the state, are going to be our Moore County teachers and technically the parent, okay? So homeschool does not do EVOs, and so what happens is, we essentially underclaim the students. So they claim the teacher, the teachers claim the students for forty percent of the instruction, which is how much of the instruction they are responsible for in English math, English and math. And so essentially, these students in EVOs are what are called underclaimed, and that's legitimate. There's lots of reasons a kid could be underclaimed, if you had a long-term sub in a room, for example, would be another reason. And so the blended kids will count at a weight of forty percent in the final calculation. So they're not as, in that calculation, they're not as weighted as a full-time virtual student would be.
Which is fair.
Mm-hmm.
Totally fair. That's still, I'm really wrapping my head around that.
I will point out, though, that they are one hundred percent for proficiency.
What?
And keep in mind that proficiency is eighty percent of the school performance grade calculation. So while they are not counted in full for EVOs growth, they are counted in full for proficiency.
We need to put an asterisk beside that. Um, I also, I wanted to know, do you have any out-of-county students in our program? Do you know off the top of your head?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
I cannot give you the exact number right now, but I can look into that.
Okay, just curious, I think, you know, the word is spreading.
Absolutely.
I love the fact that the teachers are designing lessons. This is not a big-box program. These are our actual veteran teachers.
Yes.
Which adds the validity and the, um, the high quality to our school. Um, do you ever see any of your students wanting to go back, or do we have any going back to our in-person school settings?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, sometimes students come to us for a variety of reasons, I'll put it that way. And so sometimes they're coming for a shorter term. Um, we had a student who had an opportunity to travel for athletics, and so this was an opportunity for them to maintain their enrollment with Moore County Schools. They're staying, they're domiciles here, but they're hitting the road because they're becoming a professional athlete, right? And so when that season ended, they wanted to return to in-person learning, and absolutely, that's one of the options. We request that they, uh, commit to definitely a semester. Seniors have to commit for the full year, though, because we do have our own traditional graduation.
I just think that is groundbreaking.
Yes.
Um, because I remember being a middle school principal and having students in my building that were experiencing that, and we just didn't know what to do. And I think that also shows that we're pushing, you know, the boundaries where we can legally and to provide that education that fits the needs of our families.
For sure.
And our students, so.
It maintains continuity, right?
Top of the line, top of the line work. Um, and I just thank you for all you're doing, keep it up.
Hi, Ms. Burr.
Hi.
How are you?
Good.
How many, how many high school grads will you have this year?
I believe we're sitting at thirty-seven right now.
Oh, okay.
We're, we've been very consistent from year to year. It's flexing between like thirty-four and thirty-seven.
Yeah, yeah, great, super.
Yeah.
What is grade banding?
Uh, so whenever I say grade bands, I mean K-5, six, eight, nine, twelve, yep.
You know, it, by design or otherwise, this morning, we had three different schools who collectively bring a tremendous package of capability. I mean, really, if you're looking, if you're trying to imagine a modernized school approach, that package is a pretty good package to begin with. I'm, I'm really impressed. Yeah, thanks for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burr, and I just, as a quick wrap-up to our unique, Mr. Ben, that was a great segue to what I wanted to share, too, is these are three very unique schools, very unique choices that Moore County Schools offers. I'm so proud of the leadership we have in those schools, uh, and the work that was done to build them, uh, and continue to build them to a high level of fidelity. So, uh, just really proud of that work. Uh, I think back to, to conversations probably Dr. Calcutt and Mr. Johnson when they were with Moore County Schools years ago with the Connect Academy and thinking about virtual options and thinking about how we partner with homeschool families. Um, and so I'm just, just proud of that work and proud of their leadership. You know, Jamie, for example, goes across three campuses, um, to monitor that work and stay on top of it, and that's, that's a lot for a principal to manage. Uh, so just a, a unique, unique challenge for Jamie. So proud of you, Ms. Burr, appreciate your leadership, thank you.
All right, we'll take a five-minute recess, please, and thank you all. All right, we'll take a five-minute recess please, and thank you all.
Bring our meeting back to order, thank you, Dr. Lackler.
Yes, ma'am, we're now transitioning to having presentations from our low-performing school designations. And we're happy to have our Cranes Creek principal here, so I'll turn it right back over to Ms. Sine.
All right. So our next group of schools, like Dr. Lackler said, are our district's low-performing schools. North Carolina General Statute 115C-83.15 details the low-performing designation. These are schools that have a school performance grade of a D or an F and also a school growth score of met-expected growth or not-meant-expected growth. Based on this designation, Moore County Schools has two newly designated low-performing schools based on the 24-25 school performance data. That is Cranes Creek Middle School and Elise Middle School. So just a couple, just a little bit of information about our low-performing schools. Superintendent determines from four options, employment of the principal at each low-performing school. Options include the principal retain, is retained in the position without a remediation plan. This is an option if the assigned, if they've been the assigned school for less than two years or they met student growth and improved student achievement scores in the prior school year. The second option is retain in the position with a remediation plan. That plan is developed with goals, goals and action steps for improvement of their school. They can be transferred to another principalship, there are a few qualifications that are there if they are transferred to another principalship, or the principal may be dismissed or demoted. The other piece to our low-performing schools is the super-observation requirements. They have this additional requirement to evaluate teachers using this process. The evaluation of the licensed staff in a low-performing school shall consist of prior-year summative, summative evaluation, all available student growth data, the staff members' professional development plan, a pre-observation conference, a formal observation, and a post-observation conference. Based on the formal observation and all other data, the administrator shall assign performance ratings. If the licensed staff member is determined to have an area of deficiency, then the evaluator shall recommend to the superintendent that the employee will receive a mandatory improvement plan. The employee will be dismissed, demoted, or not recommended for contract renewal. The employee will be removed immediately for conduct that causes substantial harm to the educational environment, or there can be no recommendation, but there needs to be an explanation to the superintendent about that. School improvement for our low-performing schools have some required timelines that they have to follow, so you'll see that there. We have to submit a preliminary plan of improving the school performance grade to the local board of education. We look at how the district plans to work with the school. Again, when we, when we first started this morning, we talked about what those commitments of support are for our low-performing schools. And then how will that progress be monitored? We have to make plans available to the public, we make our plans of every school available to the public. So it's not just our low-performing schools, it's for all of, all of our schools. We present the school improvement plans to the local board of education, which we're doing today. Local board of education will vote to approve, modify, or reject the plan. We submit the final plan to the state board and then provide access on the final plan on the website. Again, we do that for all of our schools, not just our, our low-performing schools. And low-performing schools are required to adhere to these specific timelines for their school improvement plans. So the first school that we're going to hear from today is Cranes Creek Middle School with our interim principal, Ms. Charice Campbell.
Thank you.
Excited to continue on this journey. I don't like to think of our school as a low-performing school, we are indeed an emerging performer school. Right away, our whole staff has just embraced where we are and where we need to go. We've had the ability to come together and talk, commiserate, and also put in the extra work. We come early, we stay late, and we make sure that we're building relationships with our students and with our teachers. First, we revisited our vision, mission, and core beliefs to make sure that they align with the strategic plan of Moore County Schools. Based on our three Rs of being ready, responsible, and respectful, our vision is to provide a positive, safe, and respectful learning environment for all students. And so that in turn gives them the opportunity to become productive citizens in our society. Our mission is dedicated to promoting active learning among the students, ensuring that they acquire the essential knowledge and skills necessary to also become responsible citizens. We believe in promoting a learning environment that is safe, challenging, and positive, so that our students can become lifelong learners and that through active engagement, that the learning environment is continuously positive. We establish good communication between our parents, our students, and our community. And also, we'd like to make sure that we hold each student in high regard. The expectations are there, we support them, and we expect them to be followed. In supporting and encouraging both our students and our staff achievements, the educational responsibility lies with everyone, that's administrators, teachers, students, parents, and the community. Now you will see our demographics. I'd like to first start and say that Cranes Creek is unique in that we are the only middle school that has four feeder schools coming into our school. Our students come from many diverse backgrounds, but they make it work. There are times where we see students that you would never see together, coming together, encouraging one another, and making sure that they take care of each other. Our population, 1% Asian, 69% Hispanic, or 69 Hispanic, I'm sorry, 1 Asian, 106 Black students, 259 white students, and 46 students of mixed race. Within that, our students with disabilities population is 18%. Economically disadvantaged students at our school is at 49%. And 3.5% of our population are English learners. Now you'll see our overall grade level proficiency. My goal for Cranes Creek Middle School is consistent accountability. I want to make sure that we are being consistent and we're holding each other accountable. As you see, our performance has gone up and down over the years, looking at where we currently fail at the end of the 24-25 school year. We were 50.6% proficient overall. Our Black students, 22.7%, Hispanic students, 41.3%, our white students, 64.4%, our students with, or who fall into our lower economically disadvantaged population, 32.5%, and then our students with disabilities were proficient, 11.8%. I have faith that all our teachers and staff have the capability to support the necessity of making sure that all of our students are being taught and that they can learn. Next, we have our grade level proficiency by content area. Again, looking, we have gone up and down between 2020, 2021 to 2024, 2025, with our reading proficiency for this past year at 53.1% for all students. Black students, 26%, Hispanic students, 38.6%, our white students, 67.8%, and our economically disadvantaged students at 35.6%, and then our students with disabilities, 13.4%. For our math, we're looking at 44.8% proficiency overall. Black students, 18%, Hispanic students, 42%, white students, 57.3%, our economically disadvantaged students, 27%, and our students with disabilities, 7.5%. Reading is our focus at this time, and although our math is low, we are continuing to investigate the lack of growth and achievement in this area. Right now, our focus is on rigor and high expectations, and we are meeting that on a daily basis. Now for our science, we've experienced some changes in our science department. In one year, we had a new teacher who came to us, new mother, husband was deployed, and she moved mid-year because she needed more support from her family, which we totally understood. She was replaced by a seasoned teacher, and that teacher worked along with her counterpart in eighth grade to work on making sure that the new standards were rolled out accurately and completely. We still have some work to do, but we are definitely rising to the occasion. We're doing vertical planning within our science department for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So our current overall proficiency is 60.1. Black students, 27.3, Hispanic students, 47.6, white students, 75.3%. Our students who are economically disadvantaged, 39.5%, and our students with disabilities, 20%. Now looking at our school growth and our school performance grade. Our staffing has changed this year, we have 16 continuing licensed teachers. We have six initially licensed teachers, and we continue with six residency teachers. Looking at our growth again, we're up and down. Last year we saw, or 2023, 2024, we saw expected growth. This past year, we did not meet expected growth. We had long-term subs in the building last year. We were without an ELA teacher in one grade level for half a year, and that was staffed by subs inconsistently. But looking at the growth and where we are now, our report card grade did dip down, which really hit hard for a lot of our teachers because we were so close, we were 12 points from B in 2023, 2024, and then we dipped down to D. So it has been a hard pill to swallow, but we are working to improve that. We've reviewed the data, and we own it. Things have changed over the years, and we are looking ahead. We're fully staffed now, very excited about that. And we're working with all of our teachers to ensure that they foster the same collective efficacy. We want to make sure that we are going forward. We dedicate one day a week in our PLTs to review data, to look at learning patterns, to also figure out what we need to do school-wide within our instruction. Now we will go over to our goals for our school improvement plan. By June 2026, Cranes Creek Middle School will increase overall grade level proficiency and subject grade level proficiency by 10 percentage points, overall going from 50.6 to 60.6, and that is the low end, we are going to exceed that. Reading from 53.1 to 63.1, math from 44.8 to 54.8, and science from 60.1 to 70.1, as measured by the North Carolina End of Grade Test. And this is how we plan to monitor that. Looking at decreasing the achievement gap for economically disadvantaged students, our baseline is 18.1, and we are looking to exceed that, definitely going back up by the end of 2026. Our performance indicator for decreasing the achievement gap for students with disabilities from 38.8. Our target again, we are going to exceed that at the end of 2026, by those 10 percentage points. Decreasing the achievement gap for Black students, baseline of 27.9. Last year, we targeted 17.9 and exceeded that, so, did not beat that, I'm sorry, so we're going to exceed that this year. Increasing overall grade level proficiency in sixth grade. Again, we have students coming to us from four different schools with four different makeups, so we are challenged with continuing to grow those students as a whole. Increasing grade level proficiency in seventh grade. Increasing overall grade level proficiency in eighth grade for reading, math, and science, from the baseline of 48.9% to the 10 percentage points. Our action steps. Utilize small group instruction in core classes to work with students and all subgroups who need additional support with content mastery. And our teachers, middle school teachers, struggle with small group, but that is something that our teachers have actually embraced and are working toward. Implement kid talks with staff and selected students to identify learning barriers and develop an action plan for improvement, implementing SOAR, which is our Flex Tutoring Time. Implementing that plan where students are pulled into ELA, math, or science classes for additional support. And we're using our academic data, most currently our I-Ready data. Completing quarterly data dives during PLTs to identify low-performing standards and students, then implementing lessons that target identified learning gaps. And just one thing that has really helped us is to have an on-site tech person. So as we're trying to move forward with all of our, all of our goals and using our equipment, we have someone right there, Mr. Garner, who is ready and always available. Implementing our weekly meetings with ELA and math specialists to create lessons with increased rigor and promote higher-order thinking. Implementing advanced teaching roles. We have implemented one in math. It is a gradual release. She teaches two core classes a day, and then the other two core classes she spends out with our math teachers and other teachers, especially our initially licensed and residency teachers. She co-teaches, also provides professional development. Implementing writing-to-learn process to improve students' high-order thinking skills through daily content writing. And we are also continuing on with our No Tech Tuesday, which does force students to write. We started the writing process last year in each core class, and we are continuing that. Goal two, by June 2026, Cranes Creek Middle School will increase growth from negative 5.74 to positive 2.01, exceeding our expected growth as measured by EVOs. And that pretty much is self-explanatory. Our action steps is that we will revisit and monitor the use of Cranes Creek Middle School Behavior Matrix to reinforce expectations and guide staff practices. Implement weekly meetings with ELA and math specialists to create lessons with increased rigor and promote higher-order thinking. Develop and implement a professional learning plan that equips teachers in all content areas to integrate informational texts effectively, supported by coaching, collaborative planning, and progress monitoring of student application. And we are all in with that. We have our social studies teachers, our encore teachers, our science teachers who are not testing. They are all embracing that and working to support. Teachers and administrators will analyze data and develop intervention lessons that target specific skills students need to be proficient in reading and math. In summary, Cranes Creek is a great place to work and learn. And again, I am very, very honored to be given the opportunity to work with the wonderful staff at the school. At this time, if you have any questions, I am ready.
Well, I hate going first. But I will. Thank you for everything you do, and make sure you always forward that to your staff as well, because I know this is hard work, getting your hands wrapped around it and paying attention to each kid that comes through your door, so thank you for that. I did have just a couple of questions that kind of came in as you were speaking. Could you tell me again the breakdown of your licensure of your teachers, residency versus initially licensed?
Yes, we have 16 teachers who are continuing, or who are on a continuing license. We have six initially licensed teachers, and all six of those, well, five of the six are all residency. One did go through a teacher program. And then we have six teachers who are residency licensed, most in the second year, and we have, I think, two that are in their third year.
Gotcha. When you said you were fully staffed, that was very impressive. So congratulations on that. And my question to kind of follow up on that was, was there anything that you did that stuck out to you that got you to that point? How did you, how did you achieve that goal of becoming fully staffed? I'm curious.
One thing is I kind of dug in my toolkit to look at people that I had come across. One young lady in particular, well, two actually, were subs. And when we had position, one position open in our music department and one in our social studies. And so I spoke with both of them and kind of outlined what it was that we were trying to do. Both have very good relationships with students and parents. One has the best classroom management I think I've ever seen to be a substitute teacher. And just talking to people, and I do believe in giving opportunities to grow your own, so the chance to mentor the teachers that we have, the new teachers, I think just really worked to our advantage. It's not easy, but it definitely works.
Well, I just want to commend you for that because I know that's a real issue, and then it shows up in your data also. So whenever you have that story to tell of your data and of a sub being there for so long, I just know personally that that's a big impact. So very commendable, and I love that you are reaching out and finding them. And of course, that's our job, is to help with that, you know, to help build the conditions that can help you more easily bring people in. I did have a question for Dr. Locklear on that. So do we, do we track or break down the licensure of our teachers from school to school? And do we keep that? Are you laughing at me? Just because I think that's obviously important to look at and keep in mind when we're recruiting.
We have that data, yes, sir. But I think the reality is we're seeing a lot more alternative licensed teachers. I think the stat we had, you know, several months ago was about 60% of our newly hired teachers are alternative licensed teachers. So that's, that's kind of the reality of the pipeline at this point. But yes, sir, we continue to monitor that and track it. And that's part of the data we look at when we're looking at our Advanced Teaching Roles Program, and where it'd be great places to expand it, to have that additional layer of support for teachers, so we can grow them, so we retain them, and grow them into great teachers.
Great. And the other thing was just a note, you said the four feeder schools. I wrote down Southern Pines, Vass, Cameron, bless you.
McDeeds.
McDeeds, thank you. That was the one I didn't know. All right, that's all I had. Thank you so much for everything you guys do.
I guess we'll just go around the table. I am also excited to hear about the fully-staffed situation. That's great. I love hearing about the advanced teaching role use to support your teachers and your students. I had a couple of questions, like you mentioned, intervention lessons. Can you give me a little bit of a story about that?
We are using a program called Rewards. And I don't know if I'll do it justice, I may need to defer to Ms. Gephardt. But we, the program is designed to work with students on their informational texts. It kind of breaks it down. There's a lower lesson that really digs into phonics. And then we have the program that's just above that that we use, that our ELA teachers are using. We also have our social studies and science teachers using a rewards program that is targeted towards social studies and science texts. So that is the biggest bang for our book at this time for students who don't need that direct remediation or intervention. We do, we've tried to split it up by grade level. So within each grade level, we have one ELA teacher who is doing remediation and one ELA teacher who is doing the rewards program. We do reading three days a week and math two days a week. So everyone gets a dip in each of those.
Sounds very strategic, which is wonderful. And I love the fact that you're using informational text. That builds that vocabulary, that background knowledge, everything that's going to help them to be successful. I got to go to, you know, an opening, if you will, and heard a lot about the behavioral matrix, the matrix that you put in place. Do you feel like it's working so far? Do you see some good results?
Oh, yes, definitely. I was looking earlier at our referrals, our office referrals versus our minor infractions. And last year, we were very unbalanced. We had more office referrals than minor. The minors are used to reteach. So this year, we've already started. We are, we're at 71 office referrals, but 132 minors. So we're able to reteach whenever we have behaviors. It has really worked. We have our students who are holding other students accountable. Our teachers are understanding the discipline matrix better. So they're able to look at situations. We have better parent contact. We always say, don't send an email, make a phone call. And that has really served to our benefit because sometimes, you know, the, the parent will, you know, have the student stop right there, and then they want to have a conversation.
And I, you know, I want to mention that it's a positive behavior matrix. So I really appreciate that. I thought the posters, the talk, everybody's all in, there's a clear understanding. So that's great to hear. I can't wait to see more. Great job. Thank you, ma'am. All right, Ms. Davis?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for stepping up to the, to the, what you know to be is going to be uphill battle for a little while. But I'm, I'm very hopeful that it'll, we'll see good results by the end of the school year. I guess my only question right now is what can we as a board do for you? Is there anything that you need from us? And the community, well, in the community outreach, I wanted to acknowledge that you've done a great job of building bridges across communities. And also that I know a couple of teachers that, that work there, and they love being at Cranes Creek. They love their school. And I, I think that that's a message that, that needs to be shared. But if there's anything that we can do for you, let us know, is all I'm saying.
Well, what you're doing right now is what we need. Thank you so much for the support. I have felt nothing but supported. Our school feels supported, our staff feels supported. And so if you can just continue the wonderful job that you're doing with supporting us. Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Campbell.
Hi.
I enjoyed your opening day tour back in June, was it June we did that? I keep hearing the term rigor used in this context. At what point does rigor kick in after proficiency is achieved? Have we got a feel for that?
Well, we front load. We need the rigor. When students are challenged with taking an end-of-year test or with our check-ins, we, we have to work on the stamina, the rigor of what they've been taught. So we are in the process now of just making sure that, hey, whenever you're taking your NC check-in, which is about a two-hour test, that you use that two-hour period. Don't go in, click, click, boom, and then you're finished. We want our students to take the time to process, to write notes. We make sure they have paper and pencil with each assessment and to really give that type of intervention that helps them to think through what they're doing.
Do you have the capability to track that time spent?
Yes, sir. Within the system, you can look. And last year, and we're going to do it again this year, I like to print out the amount of time that a student spends on an assessment and then let them see that. Because sometimes they don't realize that they finished in 38 minutes. And so that, that proved to be very helpful for us in the past.
Okay, great. On Slide 56, we refer to complete quarterly data dives during PLTs. Is that to infer that you do, you do only quarter PLTs?
No, no, we do PLTs weekly.
Okay.
But when we do the quarterly, we usually have Mrs. Gephardt to come in and do kind of like a comprehensive, so that we can look at everything. But we do review data weekly. To the point that some people are really tired of seeing it. We will keep going.
Okay, super. You've had a cohort of discipline problems, I think, over time. Are there any special, special approaches you've taken to alleviating that?
Yes, sir. One of the biggest things that we've done is to implement the Smart Pass system, where students have to actually request a pass to leave the classroom. That helps us attract students to make sure they are where they're supposed to be. We are, we have higher visibility in the hall, especially during our transitions. All of the administrative staff, along with our school resource officer, we're out in the hallways as students are transitioning. We've implemented having our buses unload one at a time, so that gives students the opportunity to come in. Instead of having students to go to the cafeteria for breakfast in the morning, we do a grab-and-go in the hallway, so that way we don't have a congregation of students just kind of in the cafeteria milling around. We've also taken the time to make sure that grade levels are not transitioning at the same time. Last year, we did have, due to our bell schedule, we had some students, like I think sixth grade and eighth grade may have been in the hallway at the same time, which is very hard to supervise, you know, the different grade levels. So we have the time now. A lot of things we do are staggered. Students are dismissed for lunch, staggered. And so that has really helped us to make sure that we are able to control what goes on in our building.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Campbell, thank you. Appreciate your leadership, and we're, we're fired up for where Cranes Creek is heading this year. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Our next school is Elise Middle School. Along with being designated as one of our newly low-performing schools, Elise is also a restart school. So there's some information there on the slide about restart schools. This allows increased flexibility, charter-like school flexibility that our restart schools have. So Elise is one of our restart schools, along with Robbins Elementary and also Aberdeen Elementary School. So when Ms. Priest shares her information, she's going to talk a little bit about the flexibilities that she uses as a restart school.
I think that's it.
Okay.
Welcome, Ms. Priest. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you so much for having me. I'm so excited to be here. As you guys know, I'm the proud principal of Elise Middle School. And so we're just going to kind of get right in and talk about our plan. I'm really excited to share this with you today. And so over the summer, my school improvement team worked really hard. We met a couple of times over the summer to really talk about what we need to focus on and meet on. And one part of that was re-looking over our vision, our mission, and our core beliefs. Just like Moore County, you know, realigned, or, you know, looked over theirs and revisited theirs, we also aligned ours to the Moore County vision and mission as well. And so part of our school belief that you'll see is that we are preparing our students to be ready for high school is what we're doing. You know, giving them those critical thinking skills, the knowledge, the character, all of that, to meet their full potential in high school, so we can make sure that they're successful leaders in the workforce. And then you can see that we have our core beliefs that make us who we are as a school at Elise Middle School. So we believe that all students can learn. We believe in creating a caring and supportive school environment. We want our students to feel valued and empowered. We are accountable for the school, for student learning. And then we are partners and open communicators for our multicultural community. And of course, we're preparing students, like we talked about, for high school, exposing to them to a variety of opportunities, choices, and career pathways. And so when you look at our demographics, you can see that a majority, you know, we have a multicultural community that we are proud of. Majority of our population is Hispanic. And then, of course, about a fifth of our population is white, as well as Black and multiracial. Okay, so overall, when you're looking at our school grade level proficiency, of course, we are naturally disappointed that we went down this year a little bit. You know, we did drop a few points overall in proficiency and growth compared to last year. But you will see that there are areas of strength, even when we are looking at our subgroups and looking at reading, math, and science that we are really proud of and that we're going to discuss today. We're proud of that our Hispanic population, like we said, that makes up majority of our population. We did improve in that area. We're proud that even if it's just a little bit, our students with disabilities, that proficiency went up as well. And so the part of being a singleton in a small school is that every single student matters. Two to three students make a big Two to three students make a big difference and can impact us as a school and impact our proficiency and our growth. And so you're going to see in our upcoming action steps how I talk about how we're targeting, how we're targeting individual students and really working with them to help increase our proficiency and our growth. And so our first area is reading. And we are really proud of our readings, our reading scores this year. And so we have worked really hard as a school. My teachers have worked really hard and we improved by over six points overall in proficiency. And then when you look at our scores, you can see in every category, subgroup, that we went up as well in reading. And so we went, just alone in sixth grade, we went up eighteen points in proficiency from a thirty-two percent proficient rate to a fifty percent proficient rate. In seventh grade, we went up from a thirty percent proficient rate to a forty-four percent proficient rate. So we are proud and even, you know, we're even more proud that Robbins Elementary had so much success because that's going to help us as a school as well. And we see that when they come to us in the sixth grade that has come to us right now at the beginning of the year. Our reading scores are the highest they've been in a long time. And so when we're looking at our beginning of the year I-ready data, our students are sitting at mid-forties to late-forties, right, proficient rate. And that's the beginning of the year, right? That's not talking about the growth that we're going to see throughout the year as well. And so we're proud that our reading has taken off and that we're seeing this growth and we're excited to see where that's going to go as well. And so when we're looking at our math data, you will see that overall, you know, math has always been a strength of ours compared to reading. We did dip down a little bit this year as well. But there are areas, if you're looking at our subgroups, our Hispanic population, our white population, right, majority of our school, we did go up and improve in those categories. You know, we have really strong math teachers. We also are going to be using our Eureka curriculum and we're using it more to fidelity this year. And we're really excited to see the outcomes that we're going to have from using that as well, too. All right. And so this is, although we expected a small dip in science, right? We have a new test that came out. We did expect that there would probably be a little bit of a small dip and I know most schools saw that. This was more of a hit than we expected to see. And so we are disappointed, right, that we dipped down twenty-five points in proficiency. That, that took a toll on us. And we're going to kind of talk about more of the action steps that we're taking to help us get there. You know, we own this. We know that this is something that we need to work on. And we're going to be talking about just some intentional and purposeful steps that we're going to take to make sure that we tighten those processes and procedures so that all students, all students are going to see academic gains. And so something that we're really proud of at Elise Middle School is that for several years even, you know, past this, that we always meet and exceed growth. That is just something that we really shine in on and that we're just, we're proud of. And, you know, this year, we did not exceed growth like we wanted to. We did meet growth. We were just a little far off from exceeding growth. But we are proud of meeting growth. And although our status right now says low performing, we don't look at ourselves as low performing. And I promise you that the staff that I have in my building are not a low-performing staff. They are one of the highest performing staff that I've served. And I am super proud to be their principal because they, you know, we made tremendous growth in the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. We dropped down a little bit this year. But I have no doubt that by the end of this year, that we will be back up to a C. And to not just a C minus is what I considered us last year, but a solid mid-C. So we're not wavering back and forth. And so you're going to see that in our upcoming action steps that we're going to discuss as well. All right. And so our first goal, of course, is targeting our grade level proficiency. And so we want to see an overall increase in grade level proficiency by ten percentage points. And so overall, we want to go from a forty-six point three to a fifty-six point three. And then you'll see, we want to increase that same in reading, math, and science. So basically, we want to take us from the forties, which is where we're sitting right now, to the fifties, right? And so reading from forty-two to fifty-two, to math from forty-nine point seven to fifty-nine point seven, really, we're shooting for sixty. And science from forty-nine point one to fifty-nine point one, and again, shooting for sixty as well. And so, like I just mentioned, our goal is to get to a mid-C, not just be a C minus. And so by getting to the fifties and by exceeding expected growth, we know that we can get there. My teachers and my students, you know, it, it take, it takes a toll when you're told you're low performing and you take it to heart. So my teachers have really taken that in and they're working, you know, they have always worked really hard and they're continuing to work hard. But my students, too, something that we're really working on is, like we said, empowering our students. Today, my students are taking, they took their ELA check-in. Tomorrow, they're taking their math check-in. And yesterday, we have quarterly, Ms. Gardner and I meet with the students quarterly to have what we call student-admin chats. We set goals with our students. We talk about just some things they need to work on and improve on. And we, yesterday, met with them and we set some goals with them. And we talked about being a low-performing school, a D school, and what that means and what we need to do to get out of it. And we talked to them about our goals and that we're not just shooting for the end, you know, the end goal, of course, right? But we need to check throughout the year and have progress checks throughout the year. And so we, you know, we set a goal of, they know, fifty percent for reading, sixty percent for math for this check-in. They know we're shooting for that. And they know that if they meet that goal, that we're going to be checking in on them. We're going to be looking at that data come Thursday morning. And if they meet that goal, they know that we're going to be celebrating them and they're going to see that success. And so we really believe in celebrating our students and empowering our students to meet those goals with us. And so when you're looking at our action steps overall for our proficiency, of course, we're powering our students like I just talked about. But we're really focusing on our professional development and our PLTs. That is the heart of our school and the heart of this goal. We have an overall grade level profi, or, we have an overall professional development goal as a school. Last year, we worked on, we used our walkthrough data, our feedback data, and we worked on effective assignments and vocabulary. And based off of our walkthrough data and continuing to grow our teachers, we realized that we needed to focus in on engaging and motivating middle school students through collaborative strategies. And that is what we are working on this year as our overall arching goal. And we're going to, of course, monitor that through our walkthroughs as well and through our PLTs as well. And then, of course, we know that there's a wide range of beginning teachers, veteran teachers, and middle-of-the-road teachers, right, just at our school. And being a singleton school, everybody teaches a different subject in a different grade level. And so there are a wide range of needs at our school. And so we set goals with our teachers at the beginning of the year through our professional development plan. And then through that, we provide choices that can meet their needs and provide a little bit of different PD as well for them and provide them what they need. And then we have wonderful teachers at our school who are doing amazing things and that others can learn from, right? Our beginning teachers can learn from our veterans. Our veteran teachers can learn from our beginning teachers. Everybody's learning from one another. So just establishing that growth mindset and everybody's growing together. And so we do quarterly, quarterly check-ins or quarterly peer observations. We call it, you know, beginning teachers glows and grows, the Elise glows and grows. And we're just going in for about fifteen, twenty minutes, you know, asking a couple of teachers to be the host of that quarter and sending just a few teachers in at a time to just check in for about fifteen, twenty minutes and see some wonderful strategies that they can just take back with them and use in their classrooms. And so that way, we're all, our teachers really, we've been doing that the last couple of years and our teachers really have enjoyed that and learned a lot from it. And so that's something we're going to continue to do to grow our staff as well. And then, of course, our content PLTs. That is something we have been working on for the past few years. And it's looking at that data every week, look, you know, improving, analyzing that data. And this year, we have a special target that we're working on is our standard-based assessments. We are ensuring that all of our assessments are rigorous. We are using school net assessments to ensure that and ensuring that the students are prepared and ready to take their end of the grade test, right? In order to do that, to make sure that they really understand the in-depth questioning and understand, you know what I mean, how to get there. And so we are using school net assessments. We're creating those in our PLTs. And then we're analyzing that data to see where we need to help our students. And we're kind of going to go get more into that in our next action, or our next goal. And so our second goal is by June two thousand twenty-six, we are going to exceed expected growth with an Elise an index of two point zero one. And so our goal, in order to reach this, is that all students will grow at least one year's growth, all students, in each content area. And of course, we want to grow, though, we have, you know, an achievement gap in our EC and our ESL students. And so our goal is to close that achievement gap by growing them more than one year's growth. And so our action steps, excuse me, you're going to see us focus a lot on win time. And so win time is what we call what I need, right? So it's what each individual student needs. That is our intervention, our flex time, our enrichment time, because all of our students, you know, we not only need to grow our students, we need to continue to grow students who are doing well, right, and keep them doing well. We need to grow our students who are our EC, our ESL students, our bubble students, right? And so catering to each of those individual students. And so we have some unique things. One of them is our restart calendar flexibility. We are able to target students, a select amount of students. We invite certain students on those days. We have seven days picked out this year that we have chosen. And we are targeting about a third, a fourth of our students. Sometimes we invite a little bit more so we can, because we know not everybody's able to come. But we want to, sometimes, it just depends on the data. We're inviting our bubble students, our EC students, our ESL students. And our teachers are working with those students for about an hour in ELA, math, science, and organizational skills to help those students and prepare them. And there's about three rounds of that for a little bit over an hour on those mornings. And then they go home. And then in the afternoons, we have picked, like I said, intentional days. Some of those days this year are aligned to when report cards go home. Because we are targeting our families and our community and we want to get their support. And so on those days, in the afternoon, if we have students who are at risk of failing or who are not doing well, our teachers are going to be meeting with those parents and guardians and to be pulling them in and to be having a conference with them so they can really, so we can talk about, you know, talk about a game plan and our action steps of what we're going to do next. So we don't, we don't want to see any of our students fail or walk out. We need to prepare them and get them ready, like we said, for high school. And so you'll see that we also have a math academic tutor that we have, that we've, are using to work with targeted groups of students for intervention. We also are continuing for our second year in a row to implement rewards intervention. This is just a systematic program for our middle school students that we are intentionally using for our EC students, as well as our students at risk in reading, to help close that achievement gap. And then continuing our monthly problem-solving meetings to develop action plans for our students who are not making that growth. We, like I said, we have made our, our win time groups. We meet about every, we look at that data every four to six weeks. My teachers are progress checking for students about every two weeks, right? And if they're making added, you know, good progress and everything, we might need to change them to another group. Fourth or not, we might need to relook at the plan and see what we're doing. And that's when those problem-solving meetings come in and we can create those action steps of where, what do we need to do next? We're being very intentional and purposeful in honing in on that this year. And then, of course, this is something we've continued to go on as our student support team is meeting weekly to discuss behavior, attendance, and academics. And really, it's to decrease the barriers for our students. We know that some of our students come in with barriers outside of academics, right? Whether it's at home, transportation, whether it's attendance, behavior, whatever it is, we know that there are some barriers that if we don't address, right, they're not going to be able to be successful academically. And so we know as a team that it's important that we're really meeting, talking about those barriers and helping to decrease that so they can be successful academically. Something we're really proud of and on that team, you know, of course, is our counselor, our social worker, our ISS coordinator, that are all meeting, our, you know, our, the admin team just to discuss those barriers and what we need to do to help decrease them. And we are proud of our attendance, right? Over the past three years, we went from about twenty-seven percent chronic attendance to six percent chronic attendance. And that's the work of that team and our teachers that are really working hard to make sure our students are in the building so they can be successful. All right.
Can I interrupt? I'm sorry. I wanted you, I wanted you to bring up that point. But I just like really let that sink in where your attendance went from two, two years ago, three years ago. That's really phenomenal. And anyway, shouldn't just be breezed by. Thank you.
No, absolutely. I appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Davis. All right. And so our third action, our third goal, this is, this is the heart of our school. This is really important to us. And this is something that our school improvement team wanted to continue to focus on, right? This is the third ti, third year in a row that we're going to be focusing on this. But that's how important it is. And so we need to, it's the culture of our school, right? We want to increase our teacher working condition survey and believe in that overall, my school is a good place to work and learn. Overall, we want to see that go from seventy-seven percent to eighty-five percent. You're going to constantly hear me say, small, it's our little motto. I'm sure students are getting sick of me hearing it. I'm sure my teachers can repeat it in their sleep, but small, mighty, and fiercely united. You know, our little motto is what I say all the time. You'll see it as you leave Elise Middle School as well. But it's building that collaborative team in that we are all a team, our teachers, our staff, our students, our parents, we're all in this together, working as a team. And that is something that we have been really working on the past few years. And so, you know, came, you know, it's my third-year's principal at Elise Middle School. Coming on a few years ago, you know, I noticed, you know, made some observations of some different things. And we were doing the MCS way, but we were a little loose in some things and we need to tighten up some of our processes, our procedures. I noticed that sometime, some of our teachers, you know, we were doing different things in different content areas, different subjects. And so really, it's just coming together as a team. So we all have one process, one procedure for, this is how, not only we do it the MCS way, but we call it the Elise way, right? This is the Elise way. This is how we do things at Elise. And really honing in on that process and making us a team. And so you'll see there's three important indicators throughout here, right? Performance indicators that are really important to my heart. And so one is I'm proud to work at this school. I look forward to each working day and I would recommend this school to parents. Very important. And two years ago, when we took the official data, you'll see the baseline data right there. But throughout the last couple of years, we have also given dipstick surveys because we just truly believe that this is so important, that we need to continue to measure it. We need to continue to talk about it with our school improvement team, talk about the action steps of what's working well, what do we need to keep doing? And what do we need to come back to the drawing board and change and adjust? And so you'll see that we gave one last November and in the spring as well. And I'll give one, we'll give one again this November. And so if you look at that baseline data, I'm proud to work at this school. It was seventy-two percent when we took that two years ago. And last year, it was at, when we took it in the spring, it was at eighty-four percent. And so we're right on our way to reaching that target of eighty-five percent. I look forward to each working day was at fifty percent two years ago. When we took in the spring last year, our data showed that it was at seventy-four percent. So getting there, but we still have some work to do. And then I would recommend this school to parents. That was at fifty-nine percent. And I was really proud to see that go up to ninety percent last school year when we took our spring dipstick survey because that is super important. We need to be proud of where we are and want our parents to send their students to our school. All right. And so you'll see these are some of our action steps that we are going to take to continue to get, to continue to build that culture and community in our school. And so the first one is the parent, parent and guardian communication, right? Among staff, parents, guardians, through phone calls, class dojo, conferences, parent portal usage. So family and community communication and support is crucial for building a strong culture. We're proud that right now, we've We're proud that right now, we are using dojo this year. 96% of our parents and guardians are signed up on class dojo. And so we're easily able to access them and communicate with them. 75% of our parents are signed up on parent portal. Of course, we'd love to see that number higher, but, you know, it was at 60% at the beginning of the year. So we have gotten more students, parents connected on parent portal. And of course, by the end of parent, our first round of parent teacher conferences, we are hoping to see that number grow to over 80% or higher. And then phone calls. That is super important to me and to our school improvement team. Our whole team as a school, every homeroom teacher took on calling every single parent. And, you know, we have a lot of Spanish speaking parents as well. And so working with our parent liaison, our teachers who speak Spanish, and calling, making phone calls home, not just sending messages. Because that is easy to do, right? Because it can also be translated. But also making those phone calls and ensuring that we are starting off on a good note and calling home to every single student and every single parent. And so that was something that, it was a heavy lift, but our whole staff took on and called home to start off on a positive note. So that way we can get that support when we do have to call about other things. Our next step is near and dear to my heart. It's capturing kids' heart. That is our systematic way that we are building relationships in our, building relationships and building with our students and with teachers. And so a lot of our staff have already been trained on this. And we gave a refresher, capturing kids' heart, and just set the standard of our non-negotiables for capturing kids' heart and our expectations. And then we're monitoring that, we are continuing to monitor that throughout the year as well. And so we've also have some new staff who came on board. In this September, we sent a couple of those staff members to the capturing kids' heart training as well. We, our hope is for us to be a capturing kids' heart model middle school by the end of the year. This is just who we are. And by doing that, we know that we've seen some positive effects. We greet students every day at every class for, we're in there during transitions. All of our classes start with good things. So we're getting to know our students outside of academics as well. We're consistently using the same hand signals. We're teaching our, you know, students to use those hand signals and checking students when they may not be doing the right thing. We're empowering our students and including them in all that we do. We're launching our class and setting them off on a good, and sending them off on a good note. And then we're just being consistent with our discipline and how we handle our discipline as well. We worked really hard to align that. Our problem solving team, last couple of years, have been working hard to align it to the MCS school matrix, district matrix, and just being consistent in how we do everything. And so we've seen a really positive gain at the start of this year. Over, compared to last year, we have seen over a 50% reduction in office referrals from this time last year, from, yeah, from now to this time last year. And so we're really proud of that. And we know that a big part of that is that we continue to capture students' hearts. And then, of course, another, the last two action steps that we're going to see that's part of this, and that's so crucial, is teacher retention, right? That's one of our biggest focuses for this year, is that our school needs stability. Because it not only takes a toll on all of our staff when we're not fully staffed, but just, it takes a toll on our students, it takes a toll on, yeah, on everyone. And so our school, you know, every, every school has turnover. That's just part of it. Our school, though, in some years are more than others. This, this past year, we had more turnover than we would have liked to seen, right? And even in the middle of the year, we had some turnover that affected us. And that's part of our scores, right? And part of our story. And so we know that that's just crucial in maintaining and supporting. So you're going to see we have some action steps to support that. We have, I would never say older veteran, we call it veteran staff. We have veteran staff, and we've had some veteran staff that have left and retired over the past few years as well. And so we are really working on, you know, recruiting for them. And we are also, just one of our barriers is being rural, being distance, right? That's part of one of our barriers. And so over 50% of our staff drive, you know, 30 to 55 minutes every day. And many do this because they love our school, our community. It's a great school. But that sometimes can be hard to recruit, and sometimes that can be hard to retain as well. And so one of those barriers, right, that we offered are hiring bonuses. Because we have our EC in our eighth grade math have seen 10, 10 staff members in eight years in each of those positions. Yeah, so 10 staff members have been in those positions over eight years. That's a lot, that's a big turnover. And so that is why we've implemented those hiring bonuses. And my staff were really on board, school improvement team, because they know that they're, you know, they're the ones taking the toll, they're filling in, they're, we're, that team effort, right? Everybody's all in, and it takes a toll on them when we don't. And so that's why we have implemented those hiring bonuses. And we're excited to have, we are fully staffed right now. And so, and we are hoping to maintain that as well with that. And so we are providing, we provide mentors stipends as well, right? We're strategically pairing our beginning teachers or with some high, highly effective mentors that we know are going to coach them up and be there and help them and support them throughout the year. And then, of course, having a full-time assistant principal to support our staff and student needs as well. And then just being present, that is part of who I am, it is part of who we are as a school. We just continue to be in and out of the classrooms, in and out of the school buildings. And my door remains open, even when it's shut, it remains open. And staff are, know that they can come in at any time and reach out at any time with whatever they need. Because that is who we, we are here to serve, our staff and our students. And my staff are well aware of that. All right. And so you'll see that we have talked about our restart flexibilities. And that, you know, all throughout, we are using our budget flexibilities, hiring bonuses, full-time assistant principal mentoring, resources, and of course, the calendar flexibility as well. And we continue to monitor these flexibilities throughout to see how they're, what impact they're making on our school as well, since we are such a unique school. And we know that, hence the reason for being restart. And then in summary, right? We know that our intention at Elise Middle School is to build a strong collective efficacy, right? We want, in the belief that all students can and will learn. We believe that we've been working hard to build a strong team that have those common processes, procedures that strengthen our student, our school so we can have those high academic outcomes. I am very proud to be the principal of Elise Middle School. And I have no doubt that we're going to be back to a C next school year. And so we appreciate your support, and we can appreciate you guys as you continue to help us grow and get back there. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll just, I'll start, just, I love the, what you just said with collective, strong collective efficacy. You can see that in everything that your school is doing. It's clear that you know your students, staff, and parents. You've got that embedded all throughout your plan. I want to recognize that growth impact from Robbins to Elise. I mean, that's powerful.
That's so powerful.
That, I love the fact that your staff is all in, you're proud of your, your work together, and you're going to get there, there's no doubt. You're doing a lot of different things. I, I just want to commend you on your focus on your teachers with the PD, with the check-ins, with the strategies, that you're using your tools with restart to impact their work. Because that's, you know, that's the key indicator of a highly successful school are your teachers. But not just that, you're doing it with your parents, your students. I'm really excited to hear that you're using your standards-based assessments, and you're using SchoolNet. I remember that back in the day. Glad to know it's still there and you're actively using it. I think that's a key part. You know, use the tools we have. You own it, you're fiercely implementing everything. Love the fact that you're working hard on your culture because it's going to spread. And thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
All right, next.
Yeah, anyway.
Just again, to reiterate what I was saying earlier about with your attendance. I know that you're really reaching out to home a lot and trying to build, you know, build a bridge there and, and doing a great job. And just not to, y'all had exceptional growth in your reading and your math. And just keep that, just look at that. And keep going that direction, which I know that you will be, but we, I appreciate you. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Compliments on your parental engagement. I think anytime you can get 75% of parents to do anything, you're on the right track. That's great. One of the data points that sits kind of hiding behind the, the attendance thing is tardiness. How is tardiness?
I don't have exact numbers on the tardiness, but that is definitely something that we can take a look at during our student support meetings. We look at it, especially when it's impacting attendance and certain scores, but I don't have a number on our tardiness right now.
What's your sense of it?
What, um, I, I don't think it's impacting us as much as, you know, I, I don't have an exact number. So, but that is something I'm definitely going to look into and take back to our student support team so we can take a look at.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I'm going last. I have, I love Elise. Elise is one of my favorite schools in the whole system. I always love going to Elise, I have for many years. I think it's a real gem up there. As you started talking, my hands immediately went to the Robbins section. And so I think it's really important for everyone to understand just how closely connected these schools are. And one success is the other success. And so one of my questions is, what are some ways that you do partner with Robbins? Or that you connect with them to talk about strategies and kids and supporting families?
Yeah. So we definitely would like to have even more, right? And so we, Renee and I are in close communication with each other. We're calling each other whenever there's a concern or a parent barrier, right? Because a lot of our, we have shared siblings or different things too. And trying to get input, we reach out, you know, we're constantly reaching out to each other whenever we need to. We share like our common dates with each other, right? Because like our flexible, right? We know that our restart flexible calendar affects them because our pickup times are different for transportation. And so we're making sure to share our calendars with each other so we can be supportive of that. We meet as a Northern Moore team, just in general, right? Over the summer, we kind of plan together. And we meet together to just go over some important dates, events. So we're not, you know, we don't ever want to overlap on each other, right? And that way, when there's certain things that we want promoted, we know we can send down to them. We have some shared teachers in common as well. And so that, that also helps in support. And so we're very supportive of each other. Could we have a couple more collaborative meetings together? Definitely. But I know that we, we are definitely there for each other and supportive.
Right. And I, I would say that, that would be a really cool thing to continue to grow. Because honestly, I've not seen the kind of growth in numbers at Robbins. We haven't seen that in quite a while. And I think it's a really opportunity for that to just explode into Elise Middle and then on to Northmore.
Absolutely.
Love all that. The other thing I really loved is I, I wish more schools had teacher working conditions in their school improvement plans. I think that's a really important piece. These are some tough baseline numbers that you're dealing with. And I love to hear that growth in that. And that's, it's, Elise is a really cool place to think about how important the small things are to the bigger numbers, report card grades. I know you've, I know you've mentioned report card grades a couple of times. I personally wish we didn't have to talk about that or focus on it so much because it's a, it's a, it's a place where, but down to the individual students, you really can make a severe impact in the overall numbers and strategy of the school. So I'm really glad to hear about that. You mentioned the geographical obstacles with training and PD. And so I know that that's a constant issue up there, getting teachers PD because of the geography. I know you guys are working on that. I did have a question, a couple of questions that just popped in. So with the restart flexibility, I really appreciate that we can do it. I wish every school could. What are things that we are funding less in order to make some of these things happen? So these bonuses, these, you know, recruiting, full-time assistant principal. And this may be too nebulous to even discuss as a school-by-school basis. But are there things that were, because I know it's a zero-sum game?
Well, not necessarily with restart schools. Because charter schools get all their money in one lump, one lump sum. Public, general, traditional public schools, we have all different PRCs, different funding ways. Some are funded by position, some, some's a dollar amount. So there's all kind of different pieces to the puzzle with public school funding, traditional public school funding. What we're allowed to do with our restart schools is to convert all of that based on what's being fed into that school. And that nets additional funds through that conversion. And by doing that, we're able to then push that savings, if you will, or additional revenue you generate from that conversion back to the school to convert their work. And so that's where that additional funding's coming from, being pushed to each of our restart schools.
Interesting. Yeah, I would like to, just on a more detailed basis, see what that looks like, what the conversion looks like. Because I think that's a really interesting model and something I'm not familiar with. So I'd like to learn more about that.
And I'm just dangerous. Ms. Edmonds is the expert. Tina Edmonds is the expert.
And I'm trying not to be dangerous. And then I did have another question. This is again, maybe a Kate question. I find it, sorry, Kate. I feel like I need more Neil questions. So one thing that is interesting in this is a high-level type of question. So Elise has met or exceeded growth for four straight years. And yet we see variance of proficiency over the four years. Can you give us a high umbrella view of why that happens?
I brought my handy-dandy computer for the numbers.
Okay.
The short answer is because of the school performance grade calculation. So school performance grade is calculated 80% based on proficiency and 20% based on growth. So two years ago, the, when you take the growth, which is that positive or negative number, they convert that to a 100-point scale for purposes of the calculation, right? So two years ago, the growth number converted to 100% scale was 92.5 for Elise. And the year, the next year, it was, this past year, it was 84.5. So those growth numbers are astronomically high compared to what we're seeing. But remember, we've talked before about growth is always comparative to the state and has nothing to do with proficiency. So if a kid comes in reading at a third grade level, I can probably get that kid to a fifth grade, maybe even sixth grade level in reading. But if he's in seventh grade, he's still not proficient. And so what they've shown over and over and over again at Elise is that they can close the gap. But when you're starting so far behind, getting it all the way to proficiency in a single year is where their, is where their numbers are. So for, again, point of comparison, two years ago, the proficiency, which is 80% of that calculation, is 46.8. And then this past year, it was 44.4. And so when 80% of your calculation is under 50%, that's what's going to pull that whole SPG down.
Thank you for that. And that was very well described.
Thank you.
Because that's a hard concept for people to understand, is, is why growth can continue to increase. And it's a perfect thing to think of as Robbins and Elise as a system. Because that growth over time then delivers proficiency down the line. That's why we've seen Northmore consistently be a successful proficiency growth because of the work in K-8 and Robbins and Elise. So thank you for that. I appreciate that. And thank you and your whole team for everything you do. Elise is a wonderful place and keep helping kids and focusing on those teachers. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Ms. Priest.
Alright, thank you guys.
Please tell your team thank you.
Okay, I will. Appreciate it.
And great questions, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Ms. Priest.
Alright, okay. Alright, we'll continue. Thank you.
Okay, well, Mr. Krenzicki is on his way in here. No, he's, you're fine. He's here. He's in the building. Okay, great. We have two schools that were previously low performing that will provide updates today. That's Aberdeen Elementary School and Robbins Elementary School. Robbins is designated as continually low performing. Although Robbins Elementary School's school performance grade is now a C and they met growth for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, continually low performing is a school that has been designated as low performing for two out of the last three years. Again, um, I've already shared about restart schools. Aberdeen Elementary School and Robbins Elementary School are both restart schools. So, as they share their school improvement information, they will also share their restart flexibilities. And at this time, Mr. Krenzicki is here to share Aberdeen's school improvement plan.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. How's everybody? Oh, yeah, I'm doing the quicker.
Unless you need me to do it. I'm here for you.
Mission and vision's been pretty stable at Aberdeen. There is, there's a pretty firm plan in the spring to revisit that. It's a pretty new, it's a pretty new scene over there. And, um, we want to align it, uh, with the new strategic plan. Uh, and it's, it's time. Look at the demographics. It is a great representation of the south half of our county. It's pretty evenly divided. It's a very interesting population there in beloved Aberdeen. And you can see the, the trend, if you squint at it, is in a positive direction. Um, and they had a nice boost last year, which was great. So, when I knew I was coming on board, I wasn't aware of that boost yet. So, you know, we're playing it a little differently, but, um, that's a good problem to have. They, they jumped up quite a bit from the previous year. They're, um, some of the highest scores they've had since the opening of that new building. And this is just breaking it up between the reading and the math. For us this year, I wouldn't say we're focused on one over the other. Uh, we are looking at core instruction in reading and math, uh, with equal vigor. And we are really not just looking at the tested grades three, five, but we're really trying to get down there into K-2 as well with the powerful emphasis on first grade, I would say. Because that is sort of the foundational reading platform. Second after kindergarten and of course, first grade. That's science. Um, considering, considering the dip, uh, that the whole state took, um, Aberdeen performed, you know, their dip wasn't quite, quite as bad as some other folks. But we have a plan in place for science as well in fifth grade. You can see there, um, there's a nice jump from negative eight on the growth index to, you know, we're still not over the zero line, uh, which is not acceptable at all. But it's better than negative eight, for sure. And of course, we're out of the hole, not an F school anymore, which is a nice place to start. You guys probably can't read this. But, um, this breaks down the overall goals. We want to jump ahead to a fifty-six. And this kind of breaks it down in reading, math, and science. So, how you get there, uh, divided up among the, the test scores there. Okay, so, first goal is to make sure we get our C. And, um, this is really a collaboration, as you probably know. We sat down with, uh, Southern Middle School team and the Aberdeen team. And we spent the entire summer building out this K-8 plan. And this is the K-5 section of that K-8 plan. And what we realized is there is a very effective process, um, already in place throughout the state called the multi-tiered system of support. And it basically, um, gets watered down in a lot of places and a lot of times to just mean, um, interventions for students who are behind academically. But we're really embracing the whole totality of the MTSS process to include the behavior, interventions as well. And that's something that I have not seen implemented vigorously before in my career. Haven't seen it, haven't, I haven't seen a model of it, um, in person. You know, it's the lore of the behavior interventions and not anything that's effectively in place that I've seen. So, that's really what we're building this year. So, if you had to ask me the main thing that we're building across the K-8 experience, it would be the multi-tiered system of support. So, you got your eighty-five percent of your kids, you're drilling down on the, um, first time instruction and process and procedures in the classroom and unstructured areas. And then for the last fifteen percent of the kids that aren't getting it, what are you doing mostly with the teachers as well? So, what additional steps are you taking behaviorally and academically to support, train, um, reteach those kids? And then for the five percent that just don't get it through tier one and tier two, tier three intervention, both academic and behavior. And again, in elementary, every elementary school I know of does tier three intervention academically. But for a school like Aberdeen, um, what are we doing behaviorally? How are we teaching replacement behaviors when the kids come in and start swatting each other around because that's all they know? And that's really what we're building. Um, it's going to take this year to do that. I feel good about our progress, um, under the circumstances. I'm really excited about it. And we'll talk more about that as we progress through our beautiful slideshow here. Okay, um, that's just the second part of that goal, to try to exceed growth. That's always a good thing to champion, especially in a, um, school that was minus eight less than twelve months ago, to try to get that plus two. So, um, our kids are behind when they get there. I keep touting this statistic, you know, you go to some of our higher-end schools, they just kind of come in knowing it's seventy percent of the kids are going to get it if you're an average teacher. You're going to get your seventy. In a school with an average, like ours with an average teacher, you're going to get forty-five, you know, forty. That's just how it is. So, you have to be better than average and you have to come up with ways to shore that up. And one of the ways they measure that is growth. So, you have a, you're two increments, standard deviations away from an average teacher right there. And that's what you need pervasively in a school in order to get out of the hole. So, that's a great goal. Again, we're talking about the multi-class, I mean, sorry, the, um, the MTSS process. And how are we develop, developing that across, um, the school with the resources we have? And of course, the most important resource is the human capital. And how are we taking the money and the human resources we have and working that system that is highly effective? So, if you look at that MTSS document, what's that thing called we have to do at the end of the year?
FAMAS.
FAMAS. So, it's huge. It's like thirty-something pages and you fill it all out and you have to read every single thing. If you don't, you're doing it wrong. It's really detailed and it takes a long time. And, um, if you look through that document, it kind of tells you exactly what to do. The problem is, it takes a lot of resources to do that, a lot of skill. Say skill. It's not necessarily more people. It's just higher skill. So, we have to work on doing both things. We have to put the right people in the right place and then we got to develop the skill in those people and also other people to make sure you can cover all the bases here. So, that's really, that's really what we're doing here. And it talks, you know, we talk about having a refocus room coordinator. It's something I did at Pickney, a version of it. We brought it to Southern Middle. And now the iteration that we're doing at Aberdeen, and that's what we're using, the lion's share of our restart money, is different. We, um, are building what we're calling, uh, behavior academies. We'll start with, hopefully get to five of them this year. And it really is taking students, if you can imagine a kindergarten, so a five or six-year-old kid. And when they're upset, they flail around and they swat the kid next to them. It's just happening left and right. Half our discipline is that, just right there. It's not people squaring up and beating each other. It's some of this. So, um, that's bad. And so, we need to, they need to be taught what to do instead. And just telling them not to do it ain't working. So, we are developing interventions, just like you do with academics, where the child will come, uh, statistically significant amount of time, three days a week, for forty-five minutes, thirty minutes, and learn replacement behaviors for the things that they're pervasively doing that are not appropriate in public. You know, if your cousin in a popsicle in the front yard, that's fine, but we ain't doing it here. And so, we're working on that. So, we're, it's been a challenge to find the right person, but we're dialing it in right now as we speak. I have, I was checking references while I was in the green room. Can we call it the green room? And, uh, and, because it has to be the right person with the right skill set. I feel good where we're going to get to here. Uh, we're still building that. And that basically lays that out. The academic piece is pretty standardized. There's no magical thing that we're doing that other schools aren't doing. That's something, I mean, I would say our skill's higher. But the process is very common across all the schools of Moore County. We do that well. And so, I, that's why I'm focusing mostly on the behavior stuff for you guys. Oh, it's me, sorry. So, we do focus on the teacher working conditions and the main one we'll focus on, and this was a school improvement team decision, sort of at the end, early September, just to focus on this as the primary goal. There's an atmosphere of trust and mutual respect in the school. And it was really important to not angle it toward the, um, leadership, the administration, whatever you call it. It was about everybody treating each other that way. And that's why we want that to be up to ninety percent. In every school I have been in, we've gotten there pretty quickly. And that is a really important statistic for me, for people to feel that when we're walking around, we're trusting each other and we're respecting each other, whether or not, you know, it's stressful or otherwise. And you can see the spinoffs there are all teacher, so rather than, I've said this for a few years, because these are always in my plans. Rather than say statistically, discipline went down, we say statistically, teachers perceive the school to be safer and the discipline be reduced. That's way more important to me than, um, because you can fudge a number, but you, perception's a perception. So, all of these are indications that teachers say that, um, you know, disorder and unstructured areas, we're at ninety-three, but we want it to be down to twenty percent. There's a problem, you know, that kind of thing. You want eighty percent of the teachers to feel good about the discipline, basically. And that's really what we're focusing on. Action step three is the classroom management and culture. So, here's something interesting we are doing with that. So, just like you have, um, tier one in MTSS, which is core instruction, first time instruction, so too, we believe you need to have with processes, procedures in the classrooms, management in the hallways. And so, we have a lot of staff that don't have enough experience in that. And it's not second nature for them to understand those processes and procedures and how pervasive it is for you to reteach that every day. And so, um, we've developed based on the, uh, the academic system that we're using, some continuums for this. And so, rather than expect the teacher to be binary, either you're doing it or you're not, we made continuum. So, if you're only at level one and your goal is to get at level six and each one's identified, so you can make incremental improvement. So, teachers at the beginning of the year self-rated and stowed away where they thought they were with classroom management, structured areas and unstructured areas in terms of their discipline, their effective, um, management of children. And then we're going to work them up that ladder so that everybody's on the high end of that continuum, just like we're doing with our academics, with the, um, distributed summarizing, collaborative pairs and writing to learn. Same thing, continuum. So, we built our own continuums for the behaviors in the school. And that's being received very well. And again, I mentioned in the MTSS, it's all over the place in our system because it's already there. And then as far as the restart, this is my fourth year in a restart school. We are using it to give talented people some extra time in the building on the, on the, in the summer and those kind of things. And then we're using half of that money, a little more than half, to, um, hire a refocus room coordinator. And it, it'll be a licensed person, it looks like. I, I cast a broad net for that just because the talent is what it is. But, um, it looks like we should be able to get a licensed person to really support that, um, process, those lessons. That's it.
Wow, that went by way too fast. But I get it.
I loved, I, I'm really excited to hear you talk about Aberdeen Elementary. No, I'm just teasing.
But I'm really excited to get to hear you talk about Aberdeen Elementary School. And, you know, I want to just applaud your willingness to step up. You're a veteran teacher. You know, uh, so much. You have such a great talent and skill in supporting schools. You know, just, I was writing all over the place, some of your ideas and your, your work. One of my questions is, what do you think is the importance, and this is out, this is outside now? What is the importance of early childhood education, support? What's, what, what are your thoughts on that? We're seeing, um, some movement in the state to support early childhood education. And, um, daycare centers. What, where do you see that fitting in with your work? I know I got to make you think.
Anecdotally, there's a huge distinction between a child who has had, um, educational practices in three and four years old versus someone who hasn't. I mean, it's, it's night and day. So, someone who can come in and already knows their letters and already can, um, you know, understand some math is way ahead. So, now you've saved yourself six or seven months of learning, uh, teaching. And so, if you're asking me, well, I would even go even further with that because then they have a structure about how to interact socially and how to behave in public. We just have a lot of students who don't understand. I mean, I just watched it happen beginning of the year. These kids are flying all over the place for three weeks because they have no idea what it's like to be in a giant building with a bunch of other human beings. No idea. And so, uh, having a process that's systematic and checked and, um, being held accountable for some curriculum is pretty important.
And I think that's a way our Board of Education, uh, can support to advocate for early childhood education, for support for daycare centers. And, um, you know, there is initiatives, there are businesses that are stepping up to help parents. to help parents pay for that. I know that's, but it impacts what we do when they come in our building. So I'm just very, very impressed. I think, you know, using the MTSS structure is there. Appreciate that you're working with your teachers, your working conditions. You recognize that and you're building that culture. So I can see that progress beginning to happen. Thank you so much for stepping up to the plate.
Hi Sean. You've really thrown a ton on the table here to chew on. When you said continuum, I just went, okay, now we're get, we're dialed in. How, how lengthy are your, your academies? Are they time-bound or they achievement-bound?
So if you generalize intervention, it needs to be a minimum of three weeks. Six weeks is better. And it needs to be an increment of at least three times a week for thirty to forty-five minutes. I don't have any hard data about behavior that connects, but it's a good starting point. So I'll let you know in June. But that's the plan, to, to model it after best practices with EC and interventions across the things that we already know. You know, you collect the data, you, you set goals, you set increments, you give it a minimum amount of time and you move the rock forward. I mean, that's, that's a practice that's in every school right now. It's just cornered over in EC world for behavior. We are bringing it out into the general system of how we do business at Aberdeen.
Is a behavior academy teacher a full-time thing?
Almost. So based on the money I had and casting the widest net, if it was going to be a classified person, we can make it full-time. It's going to be a certified person. We'd adjust it down and just get them in the core section of the day, sixty percent. And just made a lot of sense to open it up to, because you want a teacher or counselor in there if you can get them. So we just took the money we had and adjusted. If this is working, I'll find the money for a full-time person next year. It's just, you know, it took a while this summer to get this in my hands. I, I was patient and I was waiting for the right information to present itself because I'm not just going to jump on something because it looks good, you know? So I did find what, I love what we found, but it was already toward the end of August by the time we found it. So then I'm taking, taking the budget we have left and making it work. We haven't been able to hire, which affords us a little more money because that salary that I haven't paid out. So it could be more than sixty percent. But the person that I'm, I can't talk about, but I'm hoping to hire this person and it's, it's a, it's a win for everybody. It's a part-time gig. There's a reason why she wants to be part-time. It's, it could be potentially very good for the rest of the year.
What do you suspect the numbers of kids we're talking about are going to get?
We're going to do the, we're going to stick to the fifteen percent. We're owning that. I mean, we can't do more than that. Like it's just, let's stick to the system. We're going to say the fifteen percent of the most needy kids with the most pervasive. So for us, as the first academy where we started, we started it without that person anyway, but we're going to hand it off, is the Hands Off Academy. So we're teaching replacement behaviors when kids get a little edgy and they feel like they need to, you know, slap somebody a little bit. Yeah, I mean, it's, they just need to learn not to do that.
And lastly, how does this relate to SEL?
It's completely intertwined. We do have an S, I don't know exactly what the little fancy name for that academy is, but the counselor's already running that one. So the two we've started, one of them is helping with emotional regulation. That's what it is. And then, and then we have the Hands Off Academy. So we determined based on data that those are the first two we need to kick off with. And then check-in, check-out is a kind of a catch-all for less intense behaviors, but a way to give kids positive attention. So that's the third one that we'll implement here pretty quickly.
Super. You're plowing some new ground here. This is great stuff.
Yeah, we are. It's going to be good.
Look forward to seeing how it works out?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thanks.
I would just say here to thank you for doing, doing what you do, day in and day out. Your staffing needs besides, hopefully, other than hopefully getting your behavior academy person, are you, are you fully staffed?
We're down one right now, but I just made a plan this morning.
Okay, just now.
We will be fully staffed on November fifth.
Okay. And for the behavior issues, do you notice, I know that you're focusing on the fifteen percent of the lowest ones, but is there a particular grade level that you're seeing it more or less in? Or is it across the board?
That, there's kind of, that's kind of cohorty. So I haven't, I haven't paid attention to that as much as maybe I could. I just feel like, I don't think it's a particular grade level, although I do see an upsurge in kindergarten this year, which I didn't expect. So the thing that startled me is the amount of kindergartners that are having regulation problems.
Okay.
And it's, I may be like that at Aberdeen, I'm new. So I just wasn't, that was the most unexpected in terms of a grade level. But no, I haven't picked a particular grade level at all, not, not at all.
Not necessarily picked, but just noticed anything?
Second grade is having the biggest trouble, but it doesn't mean necessarily that it was just students in second grade that are having. There's a lot of, a lot of factors, yeah.
Okay. Technology, do you have any, another one of our schools mentioned a tech-free day? Are you limiting that with their learning?
I don't, I, I know at the middle school, it kind of chapped me up. I am not feeling, that doesn't seem to be a pervasive issue at Aberdeen. I'm not going in there saying they need to get off their computers. I'm not feeling that at all. I mean, we have a couple of teachers that maybe hang on that a little bit more than they should, but it's an isolated problem. I wouldn't say it's an Aberdeen issue at all. And in the lower grades, really not seeing that at all.
Okay.
Especially compared to the middle schools, which is leading to the high schools, which is, you know, Chromebook.
Sure, okay.
An old guy like me kind of stresses me out.
Yeah, same here. And last one, your parents, are you, you're building relationships well with them? Are they pretty receptive to you being there, push back?
Yeah, I, I already know so many of those families. I would say it's not quite fifty percent, but it's pretty close. So my experience right now is they either know me or their neighbor knows me and it hasn't been like a new, starting over. Like when I went to Southern three years ago, you know, I had to earn my stripes there for about six months. I haven't felt that at Aberdeen. We just sit down and take care of business. I haven't, I was waiting for it, I was bracing for it, but we haven't had that. I do, I heard you talking to, on the little thing, and, a minute ago. And if you're not going to ask, you should. Tardies and attendance is a big problem in Aberdeen. And it's stressing me out. And it's not in our plan because you can't do, I mean, you only look at so many things at the same time, but I'm adjusting to that because I do think, even if it's something that you kind of set to music and let it kind of roll in the background, we need to do something because I don't think our young parents at Aberdeen Elementary understand bringing your kid thirty minutes late, how terrible that is.
Yeah.
It's sixty hours of instruction at the end of the year. And we're sitting here trying to scramble to find money to help this kid with extra help and then they miss sixty hours of instruction. That's not acceptable. And so it's pretty upsetting and it's a new problem for me. I didn't have that problem at Weston Elementary. The middle school's kind of hit or miss and the kids have a lot more input in that. Here it's purely a parent concern and we just have to, I have some ideas. I just, we just need the time and energy to push. But I'm not waiting until next year. I just want you guys to know that. It's just, can't do it first quarter. But we got a plan in my head that's brewing right now.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Because it's bad, it's, it's a problem.
All right, thank you for letting us know.
And let us know how we can help with that.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Lynn, so Lynn shared, Officer Lynn is shared between Southern and Aberdeen. Yeah, he was just with me a little bit today. We, we're not getting SRO level problems right now, thankfully. I mean, he pops in every once in a while, but he can, I mean, I have a really good relationship with Lynn. We worked together now for many years and he knows that I'm, if I need him, he'll come by, but he's stationed at Southern. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Krasicky. Madam Chair, just a couple summary points if I could.
Yes, sir.
Just one, you know, we've had a couple of schools that we've seen that the teacher working conditions survey data is in their plan and then we've seen some schools where it's not in their plan. And I just want to, in general, emphasize that our school improvement plans are built on areas of greatest need. And the teacher working conditions data at those schools were not identified at areas of greatest need. However, it doesn't mean it's not still important. It doesn't mean that those schools aren't still monitoring it. In fact, all of our schools do what we call dipstick surveys, both in the fall and in the spring, in monitoring that data and being attentive to that data and working with school staffs to ensure we have those positive collaborative cultures, you know, built on mutual accountability. Culture trumps everything. So we're always attentive to culture and tending that garden because that's critically important in our school. So just wanted to make that point. But as we can see, some exciting work at Aberdeen, some tough work at Aberdeen and appreciate Mr. Krasicky's leadership.
Well, it's been a very impressive morning and we'll take, I don't know, thirty minutes? Thirty minutes? Take a thirty-minute break. Thank you very much.
We'll call our school improvement reviews back in session. Thank you for being here. Thank you for lunch. And we're ready for Ms. Robbins. Ms. Sinem.
I will just turn it right over to Ms. Robbins. This is exciting.
It is exciting. Before we get started, it's always an opportunity for me to just say how grateful I am to be able to serve in the very community that I grew up in, and that's always a positive thing. And it's been an honor to be part of their, their team to help move this needle. So we'll just get started. Are you gonna click? Do you want me to?
You can click.
Okay. Either way. So our vision and mission, we respect, we engage, we succeed. We are there to provide high-quality education for each one of our kids. We're 100% on board all the time. And one of the things that we looked at, or that I looked at in preparation to talk to you guys is, you know, your vision for us, and then our vision and how we do have some mirrored core beliefs, which we are collaborating with families and the community, right, to meet the needs of the whole child. That has been something that I really took a hard focus on last year, is making sure that our families knew that they could get in the door, and they had access to me when they needed me. They could call me on the phone, they could come in and meet with me, and that was just a very big, powerful pivot move to make sure that they knew that they had an advocate in their corner that was gonna love on their children, but also have time to talk to them to help grow them. So those things, we will continue that business at Robbins Elementary. That's just become who we are. Last year's demographics, you know, we're about 56 Hispanic population. And, you know, I could rattle through these numbers. You guys can see them the same way that I can. But we, we can look at these, but what I can tell you is that I have some of the very best kids in the county. And that's the bottom line for me. They're all children, and they all need to be met, and I'm, you know, happy to do that. Uh-oh. There we go. All right. So, good news. Our GLP performance, we went up in all categories, which I'm super proud of. We did take a little bit of a dip in our students with disabilities, but we know, right? We know, and we know how to attack it, and I've already done some mitigating, reducing class sizes, taking a look at goalbook for this upcoming school year, which is super wonderful for us. I do have the right team to hit that, that certain population. And so I feel like, you know, that's an area that we're just gonna keep working on to make it better. Our GLP for the reading is the same. We went up, and we dropped just a tad. Wait a minute. We would drop just a tad, like .6 in reading. And we are using all the same materials that the county's using. We use magnetic, we use Core, we use UFLY. We use Achieve the Core daily. Kids are getting English instruction and phonics every single day. They're also getting reading instruction every single day. And so this year, our sit team sat down and said, "All right, we're gonna take a hard focus at how we're gonna level out that reading a little bit." That is an area that we know that we need to continue to work on and move the needle on. And so we're aware of those things, and we hope to get that back going. Math was our strong area, and I'm super proud of it. It's Eureka. Eureka, we held tight to grades three, four, and five. Did Eureka to fidelity. And because of what I saw, we also picked up K1 and 2. And they are also implementing Eureka this year. And so I'm super grateful to our CNI departments because they've been offering PD to support us. Brandy Alred has been leveling the playing field, and we have made sure I, that's one of my firm beliefs, is professional growth, and so I support my teachers in going. And we make it happen at Robbins to make sure there's subs in the building, right, to make sure I can get my teachers out there. The other thing, and I'm gonna pivot back to reading just for a minute. Lane Street is also a big part of the work that we're doing to improve our reading. And she's there every Tuesday to help us make sure that we are aligning to letters. And we're using the structures according to letters, and so she's also been a wonderful resource for my teachers to utilize. So that has been helpful, and that is ongoing for this year as well. And then science, well, this one just blew me out of the water in August. I, we grew 13 percentage points, and that was with new content and new alignment. And what I can tell you is that our teachers in 5th grade, they doubled down, and they were looking at standards, and we unpacked them, and they practiced, and they did all the things. And this was just the icing on the cake to a really good year. When this came back, I was super excited, and, you know, that's amazing. It was amazing to see. And so I'm also very excited about our growth. You know, last year, the year before, 2324, we were at negative 1.24. Our goal is positive 2.01. Well, we are now positive 52, and I'll take it, right? That's moving the needle, and we took, you know, we had really good processes and procedures. We started really tight with our PLT processes, going to Solution Tree, making sure I had things in place to help them feel supported and valued, but also knowing that, you know, hey, we can move the needle. Our kids can, and they absolutely did. So that was positive. The other piece that's not reflected on here is our EL progress, and that was something that really helped us, and that I want to speak to that a little bit because in 2324, we were at like 42, right, not met, and this past year, we were at 67.4. So I can just remember my ESL teachers coming to me and saying, "Oh, my gosh, we got 19 kids out under access. That is phenomenal work," and that's really digging in. And my teachers did that last year. They dug in hard, and they were ready to move, and it showed, which gave us that great 58, which was amazing. And I will never forget that feeling of seeing that populate. It was, it was probably, it was shocking, and my staff worked so hard to get there. They worked so hard, and they're continuing that work, and that's the piece. We're continuing that work. So this year, our goal is to increase by five percentage points again. We wanna move from 47 to 52. In reading, we wanna move from 38 to 43. In math, we wanna move from 51 to 56, and in science, from 63 to 68. All achievable goals, and we have all collectively talked about it. I do think that we've got some good processes and procedures in place where we will continue to move that needle. Some of the action steps that we have for that is, I've already spoke to it once, but having CNI come to the table to help us. You know, laying hope shields, having Brandy Alred at my disposal. Of course, I know if I need to get to Donna, I know exactly how to get there. But, you know, having those people above me to help support when needed has been a huge asset to Robbins Elementary. The other piece is, the one area that I, I feel very strong about is that I, I do know instruction, and that is in large part to my work as a former instructional coach, and that was also under Donna. So those pieces have kinda molded me into what I am, and I'm able to support my teachers, and they know that I know because I've been in there with them, so that's been positive. We are continuing to plan that Rocket Time, right, and Rocket Time is crucial. We have a 50-minute blocked-out time where kids are receiving intervention. Sometimes kids are going out for ESL, sometimes they're going out for EC services, sometimes they're in the room. But my teachers have really taken it to the next level, honestly, and they look at the data collectively, and we start farming out children. And what I mean by that is everybody has a niche, and every teacher has a niche for something, and they really hone in and go, "Wait, I know how to do that really well. I'll take this group of students to help support them." And so we are constantly moving kids in and out of intervention groups to hopefully meet the need that they may need, especially if they're not getting tier-three intervention provided by an interventionist, or from ESL or from EC at that time. And the other is, you know, we're monitoring the progress of students. So this year, my MTSS team met over the summer, and that's, normally, it's your sit team, right? Your sit team meets over the summer, you come up with the plan, you start doing the work. Well, I pulled the MTSS team over the summer because we needed to do some overhauling, a little bit of work there to make sure that we had the right processes and procedures to capture students who were falling behind, or maybe through the cracks, ones that we hadn't identified yet, so that we could get them on a list to get support. And so it's been beneficial. We changed our kid talks to every other Wednesday so that we are able to meet with teachers in a two-to-one, or maybe even a two-to-two, for 30 minutes' worth of time, so that we can talk about these kids that we have interventions in place for, or that they may need an intervention, and it really defines that time down. My instructional assistants have been wonderful because they leave their home in their class, and they go cover, so that we can pull 4th and 5th and 3rd grade and 2nd grade who does not have an IA in place. And that's new. We're, we're still working out kinks, but right now, it's working, and it helps us really define down who do, who do we need to support, and what are we currently doing? Is it working? Is it not working? So that's been positive. Goal two is to increase that growth from 58 to, we're still working towards 2.01 positive. We're on our way. It takes, growth takes time, right, and we all know that growth takes time. And so some areas that I'm working on is still utilizing some of the same things, y'all. The things that we have in place are working, and so there's really no reason to add more to the table if we've got processes that are working now. And so the only other piece that I can add that you don't currently know about is, well, let's talk about that feedback. I see that now, gathering during classroom walkthroughs. My AP, my ISF, we are currently doing walkthroughs to make sure that we're checking to see what that looks like in the classroom, and providing feedback in an area so that, hey, we can work on it here. This is what I saw that was positive. Here's an area of growth. This year, the sit team worked together to create a professional development plan in which I'm bringing learning focus to the table. And so our walkthroughs are based off of our learning focus, professional developments, and in that way, I can make sure that we are growing according to what I brought to the table for them to learn about for professional development. The other piece is, is I'm using restart flexibility to provide substitutes and registration fees to provide professional learning. I feel like teachers need to be loved on, and they need to go and continue the work to grow because everything changes. I love to come and get new information and grow and try it out, and they need to be encouraged to go and continue to grow as well. And then, of course, I'm a restart school, so some of the flexibilities I have into place is, you know, I pay stipends for staff to participate in school improvement planning. So over the summer, I bring them in for two days. I'm gonna pay you to come in. It's incentivize it a little bit. I used MTSS to bring them to the table for three days because we needed to take a look at PBIS. We needed to take a look at our education handbook data. We needed to take a look at a lot of things, so I needed a few more days to get that going, so I used that this past year. I really focused in on the professional development. I sent teachers to go see other teachers in other schools. I sent teachers to NCAT. I sent teachers wherever, if I could get them there. I was trying to get them there to grow them. I also am using professional, restart flexibilities to provide professional development from learning focus specifically. And then I also hired an interventionist for math last year. I was, I was able to hold on to her until about March, and then Moore County Schools took her right back to preschool, which we appreciate. She's very good there. And, but she was a strong advocate for math for us, and I hate that we lost her, but I also know that she's doing good work in preschool. And then also, again, we provide paying for substitutes if they go out of, you know, if they go to NCAT, we have to cover the classroom. So I'm either covering a registration fee, or I'm covering a substitute, one or the other. I try to make that happen. Okay. That's pretty fast.
I know you wanna talk more. We wanna hear more.
Ooh!
I'm teasing. Mr. Benway, you wanna start this time, or Ms. Davis? I hate you.
Sure, real quick. Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you very much.
Good stuff. Looking back at your science achievement, are those the new standards?
Yes.
Okay, everybody was going, "New standards, new standards."
New standards, new alignment, all of it, yeah.
Yeah, great. Super. How's your personnel roster?
It's good.
Yeah?
Yeah. I'm full. I'm fully staffed. Yeah.
Good. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Benway took my one question. I just wanna say I appreciate the patience that you have to have because if you're like me, which I think you might be, there's a problem, well, I have a solution, let's get it done. But sometimes we have to wait for that to come full circle before we change and try to do something different. So I appreciate the, the patience that, that you're showing and, and not changing everything.
Yeah. It's, I've been reminded, right, from upper leadership, change takes time. And you are not wrong. I do want it to happen right now, right? And I know that about myself, but I also have great leaders above me that remind me, right? It takes time, and the school is really yours over time, and it, and you've gotta sit in it. And so we had a very wonderful year last year, and I'm not blind to it, but I have an amazing team at that school, and they are working so hard. It's just, it's been a blessing.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robbins. A couple of things I wanna point out is your advocacy for your families. That was tremendous. I think that, you know, speaks volumes, and thank you for being that person for our families in our Robbins Elementary School. I'm glad to hear that the goalbook is helping you. I was looking over there, and just thrilled about that. I, we wanna hear more, you know, so anytime you get a chance to tell us those stories, please, please share. I was excited to hear about all the instructional tools that you're using, Magnetic, Achieve the Core, all of your use of your, our curriculum specialists coming in. You're using all the tools in your toolbox. I really liked the fact, and I appreciate the fact, that you're focusing on your teachers with your professional growth, and that you're, you're inviting others in, and your teachers are receptive to that. You kept saying things like, "They dug in hard. They're working hard." Can you tell me just maybe a couple of things, like maybe a story or two about what you've witnessed? Like, what do you mean, "They dug in hard"?
Oh, okay. And during PLTs, we look at data a lot. I was coached that way, and so my, my brain naturally goes that way. And so we sit around the table and go, "Well, what worked and what didn't? What's, what question did, did we not do well on, and why do you think that happened?" And that's when you start hearing them have really great conversations. You know, "Oh, gosh, they all did poorly on question number 12 on the NC check-in." Was that what was wrong? Was it the question itself, or did we miss the mark on the standard? Um, and so that has been something, I've got a, I've got a couple of strong PLTs that can do that. But I also have new PLTs, right, where there's, um, fresh faces at the table. They've not taught a day of school in their life, or they've only been teaching for a few years. And so we've had great conversations around what that standard means, right? What's in that standard? What is the state of North Carolina asking us to do? And so there are times when, uh, my sweet ISF, um, she will let me take the pen because I actually love that part of the job. And, um, I have taught a lot of grade levels, so we sit at the table and I'm like, hey, let's try this. Let's try that. And so the receptive, the openness of my teams, it's starting to really blossom. Um, you know, Lane Street is another good story. Um, she comes to the table, she talks about letters. It keeps letters at the forefront, which is something that, you know, we just went through two years of training. We have to keep that at the forefront. Um, and she's really good about holding us accountable there, and I don't mind it. I have to be reminded too, right? Um, but she will do, um, these activities with them, and I'm like, oh, my gosh, I don't ever remember doing that when I was a first-grade teacher. Yesterday, I walked into a room. This was an activity I saw her doing last year. It is now still moving forward, right? Same sentence structure. It was wonderful. So it's those little things that are working for us.
That helps, those stories.
Yeah.
Those, um, glimpses into the what's working.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's clear that you're, you're setting that environment. You're building that environment and that culture for them to really dig in deep and be, have that courage
Mm-hmm.
to look at the data and then work together as a team.
Yeah.
That helps to understand those stories. And I love, um, I think you're really doing great work with the kid talks and your use of MTSS. We heard that with Mr. Kunsicki
Mm-hmm.
at Aberdeen Elementary. So those processes are working. Looking at our leadership team over there, um, and great job on the science growth. I mean, you know, that's, that's showing that we are, we are, you know, really focused on science, social studies, all of the, you know, beyond reading and math and that vocabulary. I'm sure had a big part of that. I'm glad to hear, um, you know, again, I'm repeating myself, but about you're growing your teachers, you're growing your students, you're growing your families. And, yeah, we're looking, we're looking forward to a really bright future.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robbins. Always let us know how we can help you and support you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Chair, if I could ask a follow-up question, Ms. Keppart. Um, Ms. Keppart, who, who is Lane Street? Can you tell us who Lane Street is? Who's this, who's this mysterious person that's, that's making such a great impact in Moore County Schools? Can you, can you tell us that?
Thank you. Lane Street is our early literacy specialist that we are provided from the Department of Public Instruction. So she is a Department of Public Instruction employee, but works directly with only Moore County Schools. And we have assigned her to support two specific schools in Moore County, but she supports all of our ISFs and, um, does, helps us do letters training with my letters facilitators. So she is a valuable asset that we have gotten from the state.
And previously?
Uh, previously, she was an ISF before she took the, took the road and left us to go to DPI. But very glad to have her still in the district. And as long as we don't get any bright ideas at the Department of Public Instruction to take them to lower, to more needy schools, 'cause we're a needy school as well. We want, we wanna keep our people.
Yeah, Donna's fault for that, and we appreciate Donna's advocacy to keep Lane in Moore County Schools. So thank you, Donna. Thank you.
So we had a part in her development, it sounds like. Yeah. We're reaping the benefits.
Yeah, I am. Lane and I were actually ISFs together at one period. So we already have a previous relationship, and it works out. Um, but she's, she's good, and she's very structured. She helps me, reminds me, so it's good.
And I love the fact that she's, you know, right there in the trenches with the teachers and focused on reading and all those strategies from the letters training. So we're continually investing in that work with reading.
Sure.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robbins. Thank you for your leadership. Congratulations to the Rocket Team.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Doll. I know you're coming in late, but we're so glad you're here. I know you were teaching all day. Yes. Thank you. Teaching all day. All right, Dr. Doll, clear.
Um, Ms. Sinem, anything you wanna do to wrap up today?
Yep, yep. All right. So thank you for your time, questions and comments for our schools today. We appreciate your commitment to our students, our staff, and our community. Tomorrow, we will be here again, um, and you'll hear from the following schools. We have North Moore High School and Union Pines High School to start us off. We have a couple of our middle schools, New Century Middle School, Southern Middle School. And then we've got about five elementary schools that you'll hear from, um, as we can finish out the day. McDeeds Creek Elementary, Sandhills Farm Life Elementary, Vast Lakeview, West End, and West Pine Elementary. And we look forward to seeing you tomorrow.
All right, we're at, uh, Board Comments, item three. Just, uh, any kinda wrap-up comments from our board members? Ms. Davis?
I don't really have, I'll wait till tomorrow.
And, and Dr. Doll, you, you were watching. Yes, you, I just wanna say, I just heard up and down today, the Moore County Schools weigh just embedded in all the conversations. But this allowed us to see the details from our people, from our principals, um, with their school improvement teams, their families. So I can't wait for tomorrow. It was evident today, and we're just excited. And we're, we're gonna continue to say that Moore County Schools has the best choice for education. And this was a joyful day. So thank you very much. Um, we're at adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So may.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll see you tomorrow.